Start the school committee meeting for April 26, 2018 with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that the meeting's being recorded and you should silence your mobile devices if you can please. We'll start if there's any public comment. Seeing none, then we will start with our student report. I see Caitlin's here. Come on up Caitlin. Looking lovely.
Thank you. I was like, I don't know where Liam is, but he might run in at some point.
He, I know, he'll come find, that's fine. It's a busy time.
We're happy to have you.
Thanks.
It's all about you, not Liam.
Of course, right. So, the reason I'm dressed like this is student council had a conference today. We went to Calhoun and Saugus and we did a leadership conference. I actually ended up, I actually ran for an officer position and I'm the new Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council Secretary, so...
Very good, congratulations, well done!
Thank you. So, I think it's really cool, because this, in this past, like, I think year, two years, we've gotten our first officer on the state board and first on the regional board, so we're starting to really do that.
Good.
Yes. And then, other news, proms tomorrow, so junior proms, so that'll be really fun. And I know, like, all the officers are like, "Let's get it done and it's time to go." And then, I know with the middle school, their eighth grade play is next weekend and they're doing tech week next week, and I went to the rehearsal today and it's going pretty well, so I'm very proud of how far they've come since I last went to one of their rehearsals. And then, there is, the Drama Guild is doing their Shakespeare play in about two weeks, I believe, around the same time as the AP testing is kind of in full swing.
Nice.
And so, I wasn't in school today, but I was told that in the AP classes, guidance came in and kind of walked through some of the AP procedures and stuff for some of the classes, so they're starting to go through those motions. Yeah. I was like, I don't know when the last time we were here, but I was like, there was National Honor Society a while ago with the induction ceremony, but I can't remember if that was a while.
That's okay, repeats are good.
Yes, but I was like, that's kind of...
There's one other big thing that happened right after, I think, our last meeting, which was the choruses all went to their...
Yes, right, yes, the, "All the gold, every treble."
They need a, yeah, I think a mobile trophy case, yes.
Yes, all the plaques and the trophies all lining up. Yes, that is, I was like, I was running track, I was like, "When was our last meeting?"
Yeah, I know, it's, it's hard to keep up with all that, for sure.
Yes. Well, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you Caitlin.
Last question before you go?
Yes.
Last time when Liam was here, there was a conversation about cars parked, and I happened to be at the high school the other day, and there were a lot of tickets on a lot of cars. Is that being successful? I know that's been a big effort.
I was like, I haven't heard too much of it, because I did hear someone, like, beforehand. I was like, I did hear one person who was still complaining about the fact that he ended up, there was no, there were still no parking spots, and he ended up having to go to the other lot, because there was, because there was no parking spots, and so, he ended up getting ticketed for going into the other lot, but he had a parking pass, so I think he's gonna talk to the main office, but I think, it's like, getting better, but I think there's still an issue of, like, people are getting ticketed, but then, they're still being there, but hopefully, like, I think it's starting to get better and to the point where it's no longer an issue.
I think there's a lot of people coming who are, who just got their license, who don't necessarily have a pass, but it has seemed to be gotten better since then.
Yeah, they've started to, I want to say, not parking in the parking lot per se, that way they can kind of avoid the ticket, and then, the people who have the parking spots can make sure that they can park.
Is this kind of the normal time where a lot of the juniors are starting to get their licenses, and so, we're doubling up a little bit?
Sophomores do, yeah.
Every year.
Ooh, sophomores do, yeah.
Great.
To overlap, sorry, I'm, apologies, my turn, I just got back from the youth track meet, youth track just started up, so I guess I'll plug that. Biggest season yet, we got 300-something kids this year, it's huge, so...
I walk home with some fifth graders, and one of the boys has been talking about it for like, three weeks, and he, as we're walking home, he pulls out of his bag and he puts his little singlet on or whatever, he was very psyched, so thank you guys for all that.
It's really awesome, we're having such a big turnout, especially, the word's really spread over the past few years, so, it's awesome. The Vex Robotics team are a team, is at Worlds right now, till Saturday. Little rocky start, they're 2-1 right now, but they have seven more matches to qualify to move on, so...
Have you heard anything about the middle school kids?
I haven't.
Because they're there as well, right?
Yeah, they are there as well, I'll have to check in on them.
Yeah. I looked on the Twitter for the middle school, and I didn't see anything yet, other than that they had started, so...
I'll find out and tweet some of that stuff out.
Yeah, that's great.
AP tests are two weeks away now, that's a little daunting, but they're coming, so we're ready for that. That's, for a lot of us, that marks the, kind of, the end of the year, so that's pretty good. We're happy to be standing there. Yeah. I know, no, there's still, there's two incredible weeks, you know, team, group bond. Of course there is.
That ship has sailed.
Yeah, that's mostly it, I think.
That's great.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the prom tomorrow.
Thanks.
All right, so we can move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from our April 5th meeting, which was our last meeting a couple weeks ago. Happy to entertain a motion to...
So, I will move that we approve the minutes of April 5, 2018, as presented in the packet.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Trissey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then, next, we will move on to the chair's report, I have a lot of things. First is, in case people don't know, that the warrant is now live on the website for the town, and town meeting is Tuesday, May 15. And then, the first thing I wanted to do is, when we had our last meeting, we talked a little bit when the town manager was here, about warrant articles 11 and 12, and you have the language in the packet, we were missing the language before, and we wanted to, I would like just to ask your, I don't know what the word would be to use, your approval, your... Support, yes, thank you, to allow me to say that we would like to recommend favorable action on warrants 11 and 12, which are financial articles related to the new fields and recreation complex behind the middle school in front of Atkinson, et cetera. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, it's in here.
Are you looking for a formal vote on that?
I don't, I was told it doesn't need to be a formal vote, just a comment of support, you can have a vote, that's fine.
I don't see why, we talked about this extensively last time.
Right.
I feel we should go on record on it.
And so, we wanted the language, which was what we didn't have, so the language is here, and I plan to, if you, we all vote yes, to send a quick note to the Board of Selectmen, but then, I can mention that at the town meeting as well.
Absolutely.
So, if you guys want to make a motion, that's, I think that's even more official, that's good.
I would move to quickly recommend favorable action on Article 11.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Mr. McDevitt. We'll do a roll call vote, I guess.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And then, there's Article 12 as well, which is also related. This is about the...
To appropriate the funds.
Right, from, these are the, the first one was about the funds from the, I think, Free Cash and a couple other places, and this one is from the community preservation. It's in here, too.
Yes. I'd make it a stone...
Yeah.
So, I'll move that we vote favorable action on Article 12 as presented in the warrant for 2018.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch, I'll also ask for a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, 5-0. Thank you guys, all right. So, one other thing I want to just update you all on is that we need to start getting ready for our final performance review for Dr. Price, and since we all went through this last year, we're the same board, it's the same process, and I have an email ready to go for you all to give you access to the form, which then all goes into a Google Doc, and then, I will make sure that's compiled and get that out at the right point. Dr. Price, here's a little schedule, Dr. Price is gonna get her final evidence together, and so, at the next meeting on May 3, she'll present that to us, and then, we will go over our review on the 17th. I know we did it much a month later last year, but we figured we'd tidy that up in May, so that in June, we can help further transitioning with Dr. Gilligan. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I will send that email in the next day or two, if not tonight. And then, we already just had, I wanted to make sure that the, the three choirs were mentioned, as well as the robotics, and we took care of that just now. And one other thing, I just noticed, looking for something, I don't know if everyone who's watching has noticed, but the ECC is doing a really great blog about the kindergarten and ECC complex, the Anne Brad Street Early Childhood Center development, and Mary Lou's doing a great job with that, and so, if you're interested in following along, it's great, and so, I just wanted to give a little plug to that blog, which is also found on the school department website under the Early Childhood Center. And that's it.
So, superintendent's report, we have a lot tonight that we're presenting, so I'm actually just gonna take a pass. Obviously, I may jump in on the school building committee update, because that's really been, at least, my focus for the last few weeks, so, if that's all right, there's a lot going on, and we're presenting a lot tonight.
We can shift right to that.
Excellent. So, it's funny to think, it's, it's been about 11 months since the school building committee was constituted after town meeting last year, and I would say, the first, you know, nine and a half, 10 months was, you know, it was kind of like a theoretical exercise, and we're sitting in this room, Jim and Jen especially, with a bunch of other people, and talking about this, talking about that, and it was, you know, just a lot of drawings, a lot of pictures, and the last month, it just, it's kind of exploded. I think in a good way, but I'm sure some people probably don't think so, but there's a lot of, a lot of dirt in the air, a lot of excavation, as people have seen, things are moving pretty quickly in the last month. I appreciate the patience that especially the Atkinson School parents have had with us, the ECC parents have had with us, and obviously, the middle school parents as well. The traffic pattern, the traffic's been, you know, I think manageable. I think the people, I know Jen and Jim have been out there quite a bit, a few hiccups here and there, no question about it, but I think that was expected. So, I feel pretty good about how things, things are going. We're meeting on a weekly basis, we have these weekly construction meetings with Triumph and the architect and our OPM, and the town's there, and we're there. It's a, it's a pretty good collegial atmosphere, you know, some give and take, no question about it, but we're progressing well. Like I said, it's excavation, the foundation right now, we expect the modulars, which are being built right now, as you know, in Pennsylvania, we expect those to be delivered sometime in probably the third, third week of June, so...
Their images have not on that?
Their images, those in line, right, and we are still trying to schedule a date to go down to Pennsylvania, that takes me like, mid to late May, that we hope to, a few of us go down and see them in action. And again, just want to, just thank the parents for their patience, it's, it's a pain, there's no question about it, but I have every confidence in the world that when this project is done, and that recreational complex is done, in three or four years, it's gonna be just the jewel of the town, no question about it in my mind, so, things are going great.
I'd just like to add, you know, Mary Lou and her team, and Greg Landry and his team have just been fantastic. I mean, they've been out there, rain, snow, sleet, and occasionally a little sun, directing traffic, custodial staff, it's just been a full team effort, and, you know, I think the thing that makes this town so special is everyone's like, "We're just gonna make it work," and I think people are really making it work. So, thank you to everyone.
That's great. Any questions or any other comments? Okay. So, we can move on to the public hearing about school choice, do you want to give a little explanation before we move on?
Yeah, so each year, we do, this is something we do each year, where we determine whether or not to participate in school choice. North Andover has never chosen to participate in school choice, given the size and the, our class size issues, I would highly recommend we continue with that practice. Does that help with...
Yeah, just so people understand what that means, okay. So, we would have, to open the public hearing, we need a motion to do that, I believe?
So, I will move that we open a public hearing regarding school choice participation for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Trissey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Public meeting is now open. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to school choice? Okay, seeing none?
An explanation of what it is would be helpful.
Yes, okay, so, do you want to do that?
Sure. So, school choice is something that Massachusetts created a number of years ago, where districts can participate in school choice and take students from other districts or allow their students to go to another district. Some districts have used that as a way, if they have additional spaces within their school, to fill up their slots. That is not an issue within North Andover, where we have more students than we currently are able to support at the class sizes that we would like to support them at. So, it is not in the best interest of North Andover, from our perspective, to participate in school choice, because we are not looking to bring additional students into our, into our school system.
So, I have a question about that. If, if our students wanted to go to another school, they also cannot participate.
They can also not participate.
So, it's not really a way to, to bring down class sizes, because you'd have to accept students, even if we had students that went away.
Correct.
You'd have to find communities that...
So, you have to participate fully.
Yeah.
And you'd need communities who would take...
Correct.
Them as well, so...
And it's K to 12, I mean, it's, it's full open, all the way.
So, it's, it's just not something that North Andover's chosen to engage in in the past, for all of those reasons? Does that help?
Any other questions, or? Happy to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that we close the public hearing for school choice participation for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witsky, uh, yeah, Ms. Witsky Lynch, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Do you think we can lift that up?
We can, perfect. So, that secret whispering was done to rearrange the, the order of events, and, and so, we're gonna skip right down to, starting under new business, A, 11A, the presentation about school safety.
So, we have our wonderful fire department and police department here, and I'm wondering if you all would mind coming forward, and I told them 7:30, but in true public safety fashion, they were early, so I appreciate it there, here. So, I, I think kind of the concept here tonight is, we're gonna do two separate things, but I see them as really strongly related. One is to really talk about the work that we're doing with our public safety officers, specifically fire and police, in terms of supporting our schools, thinking about, you know, the unimaginable, and what we're, what we're doing to, to get ready for that, and then, we're gonna move into kind of the social, emotional, both kind of very important aspects of ensuring the safety of our, our students. So, I appreciate the four of you being here, and I'm gonna turn it over to you guys, I know you've kind of coordinated what you're gonna do, but, thank you so much.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll just say a few words about how this all started. In 2011, after Sandy Hook Elementary occurred, there was a bunch of us that sat in a meeting, and everyone wanted to, you know, have some input as to how we can make it safer, and we took a lot from that, and sat back and actually came up with a plan, and it started with just the police officers in the high school doing some drills, and then, we started realizing after watching some of these other incidents that, jeez, the fire department's involved, too. So, North Andover took a huge step forward, and I let the, the fire chief talk about it, but we actually incorporated fire first in our area to do it, and when you hear the stuff about the safety that goes on tonight, you really have to understand that this was like, really organic when it started in 11, and it's transformed into what it is today. So, I'll start with Lieutenant Fold, if you want to go over the whole Alice concept that you've implemented here, and he really took it to the next level. We started doing it, and he brought it next level.
So, I think it was a little over two, two years ago at this time, we sat down, myself, Dr. Price, Officer Caffrey, and decided, listen, we need to bring the whole school district this way. Chief Gray started in 2000 off the high school, we needed everybody on board, so everyone just learns throughout the whole process, just like you would in education. Dr. Price was on board, we came up with an implementation plan, and we started with the staff, then we started with the parents, then we went to the students, we started doing drills, we've, we're shooting for four drills every year, we've done two so far this year, we did have a little hiccup after Parkland, we had some drills planned, we decided it was better off to take a step back at that time. Hopefully, this month, we'll get all the other schools in, and the fire department also participates in these drills, actually, Officer Caffrey puts most of them together, gotta give her most of the credit, and the other thing, the other hiccup we ran into this year is Officer Caffrey had, is off duty right now due to an injury at a basketball game at the middle school.
Student staff.
So, Chief Gray recognized the need, because Officer Caffrey was our only school resource officer, I got Officer Logan involved, he was handling both schools for a while. Our staffing came up after some graduates from the academy, so, Mr. Ja, Principal Jackson must be very happy, because he now has a full-time school resource officer at the high school, and with that, we just keep, want to continue moving forward, doing our drills, making this basically become second nature to these kids, similar to the fire drills they've been doing for years.
Lieutenant, would you mind just reminding people what ALICE means?
Okay, ALICE, ALICE is an acronym, means alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. It's not a step-by-step process, the alert and the inform are meant to basically tell people what's happening as close to real time as they can. The lockdown, counter, and evacuate are actions that people involved in these situations can take. Preferred is evacuate, if you can't evacuate, the second preference is lockdown, and that's using a barricade also, and the least desirable, hopefully never have to use it, is the counter, that's when you have, actually have to fight back. There's different variations, you'll hear run, hide, fight, you'll hear avoid, deny, defend, same concept, just put in a different acronym.
So, we, we've been involved with the police department closely since early 2015, when I was deputy fire chief. At the time, Chief Lieutenant Gray came to us to involve us in the, the active shooter program, and we went through many different type of scenarios, usually during school vacations, and used all the schools, because what we're finding is, a lot of police officers might not be familiar with the schools. So, we wanted to do training in the schools, so they could actually see, and after we were done the drills, we would bring them around and show them all the areas of the building. A lot of times, the fire department gets into those because of the fire drills that we do so frequently. So, we've been involved with the, the police department since 2015. Deputy Rowe now will be overseeing that with Lieutenant Folds. We plan on continuing that this summer, using the schools again, as, as well as using Aussie properties. The deputy is ALICE certified, he's been certified for quite some time, so you might want to talk about some of the plans you have for the drills.
Well, talking with Lieutenant Folds, we were gonna start doing some kind of evacuations, like, one of the things that we've been practicing is how to evacuate people out of the building. It's one of those areas that we really haven't been spending a lot of time doing, it's starting to now sweep the, the country, especially with fire services, and going in and being like a rescue task force with the officers into a warm zone, get into the warm corridor and actually take people out, triage, it's something that people haven't done, fire departments haven't really done, it's a new avenue that we're gonna be going down, so that's one of the things that we're gonna be practicing with the, the police department, getting our SOPs and our, our general orders and everything in order, so we can work together very well and seamlessly.
And if you saw social media over the last week, you saw the training we did at Osgood Landing, which was, in my opinion, phenomenal, Lieutenant Folds ran it, we partnered with Lawrence Police Department, because if you watched Parkland, you saw like, a major incident like that, you're having a multi-agency response, and even though we have multi-agency police-fire, we reached out to the biggest community with highly-trained officers who are just really good at what they do, and they came in and worked with us, and, you know, went through the scenarios, the realistic gunfire, you know, really hearing a gunshot inside a building and try to differentiate where it comes from, it's sad, but we have to do it, and it's important to have the training under our belt, so when it does happen, okay, solid, verifiable, realistic, ongoing training makes it happen. And if you saw the other people that participated, the Lawrence Fire Chief actually went through it, so we're gonna have our fire chief go through it, maybe next time with me, and...
I saw you on social media.
But, no, we, we pride ourselves in that, and from what the feedback we got, Lieutenant, from the City of Lawrence, they, they enjoyed it, too, and appreciate it.
They said it was some of the best training they'd had, and similar to what I said earlier, as far as giving the students to make, be second nature, we, that's why we train, because this is, responding to an active shooter is against all of our instincts, as far as we do room clearing and all that. Active shooter, you're walk, you're running by rooms with closed doors, you don't know who's where, you're just following by, you're just going by sound. So, we have to make that part of our second nature, that's why we have to do the training.
And one of the questions we kept getting asked, both the Lawrence officers, training officers, and us is, you know, what's the benefit of this police training? Yeah, the benefits, police training, fire training, but the end benefit is, the community realizes that they have a department that can stand up and protect them, and it's peace of mind for all the parents to send their kids to school and know that they're safe. And that's not just in North Andover, that's Lawrence, that's everywhere.
As you can see, ALICE's been, it's been building up since back in 2011, 2012, it's been building up, we started here, just, you know, the police, then the police and the fire, now other neighboring communities. When we start doing our training and being, we're gonna start expanding as we go, and we're gonna be involving the Lawrence General Paramedics, MCI drills, because these are things that we're supposed to be doing anyways, but we might as well incorporate it and start to bring in other agencies, so they can get also, get that training, and we can rely on our other neighboring communities.
We wanted firefighters to know what ALICE was, a lot of them were not familiar with that concept, so Lieutenant Folds came in and put every one of our firefighters through the, the ALICE training, just so that they're aware of what it is, what it means, and, you know, if that event, we are gonna be together, if, if a situation ever arises, you know, police and fire are gonna be working closely during that situation, so...
Any questions?
Yeah, oftentimes, when you do the lockdown drills in the school, there are parent volunteers in the building who have no idea what they're supposed to do. Is there any opportunity for parent volunteers to be trained?
I think that, not only parents, but I think other businesses have actually called for training, too, so we're explaining that.
That's interesting.
The one training, we could set up a night, it's just, it's tough to coordinate, so everyone gets that training, you know, everyone has a free night, doing it during the school day obviously isn't an option, you know, it'd have to be after school hours, but we can work together and probably set something up. We had parent nights at every single school when we were implemented it, but that was just the first year.
Right, right.
So, people could understand what it was.
I actually had the opportunity to participate when the high school teachers were trained, that when the first training you did, I went along and did it, it was...
That was a good one.
It was incredible, actually, it was incredible experience, but, so, what's, what happens annually, I mean, there are new teachers that come in, is there like, a refresher course that happens annually with the teachers?
Yes, so Officer Caffrey meets with all the, when they're in there, two days prior, Officer Caffrey has a block, she meets with the new teachers, goes over ALICE training, their responsibilities, they don't go through the live scenarios like you did, right, because there's just not enough time to do that.
Right, right.
But they get a full breakdown on it, and then, they'll participate in the lockdown drills going forward.
Right, right, okay.
And just back up one real quick on one thing, too, with the training, multi-agency response, we also did training with the staff, and Principal Jackson actually participated in it as well, and, I mean, you can speak for, you know, how, how we did it.
Yeah, that's the one I went to, actually.
That was the one, okay, yeah, so you know, okay.
That was, it was incredible.
And I would just say that we planned it into our PD the first couple days of school, so that was planned for, particularly for all new staff, and two things about Officer Caffrey, people may not know, this year, she came in on her day off, and it was vacation day, and she came in and did a block with all of the new teachers, and we had almost 46 this year.
Right.
And then, secondly, real kudos to her and all the staff, but having the ability to make it relevant and appropriate for each age level, and that's what parents told me, that's the, you know, feedback I've got for my own kids, especially my son at elementary school. It's something the fire department's always done with fire drills over the years, with kindergarten, first graders, and speak to them.
Yeah, I mean, we've always said that, especially the fire safety trailer, when we put them through the fire safety trailer, the likelihood of them ever being involved in a fire is gonna be very, very small, but if we don't talk about it, we don't train for it, we don't discuss it, we're not prepared for it, for it does happen. So, the whole idea is, whether it's fire drills, lockdown, is not make the children worry about going to school, it's just something that we need to, to be prepared for, and to practice these things, and we, we try to do that, you know, during the fire drills and the, and the fire education program, because we don't want them afraid going to school.
I, I just want to add to that, I mean, I think every time I've, I shouldn't say every time I've been in schools, but I see you guys in schools, and I think that that makes a world of a difference, because you don't necessarily want to think that the police naturally being in the schools is, you know, the norm, although we do have resource officers, but they, they see you and, and they're not freaking out, they're, you know, they understand, some of them are excited, of course, but it just seems part of the day, that you're there, you're part of the community, you're, they're, you're part of their schools as well, so, so I think it's fantastic, and I know, I do see you at Kittredge, for, for some other reasons, but, you know. But I do have, have a question, so... But I do have, have a question. So one of the things that I think parents, especially of younger students who, you know, maybe, you know, first time that they, they've had exposure to this. What do we do to make them understand what the ALICE program is better? So that maybe they can have some of those other conversations at home to get the kids ready for some of those things. And I, I know we're not doing them blindly, but how do we, how do we educate our families better? And it's not just, you know, that things are out there on the website, but, you know, that we're gonna be doing these drills and this is what we expect. And we don't want to scare the kids. And I, I think when they're older and, you know, middle school and high school, you know, they, they've seen the news and they understand some things. It's scary, I think, for, you know, some of the little guys.
I think, I defer to Lieutenant on this one, but I think it's, it's baby steps. Start out, you build in a foundation. You're not gonna go right to the full-blown program. You're starting out at the very element, like, you know.
Absolutely. It's, it is a step-by-step process, similar to if you were teaching math. You start off at this level, then you work up to high school level. It's the same thing. It's, we do, sorry. But we start off, the ALICE training that Kara gives to the kids in the elementary school is actually an Alice in Wonderland theme. Where it has Alice comes into your school and explains it at a very, very low level where they're gonna rely on the teachers, they're gonna listen to their teachers, just like you'd expect them to do. Then you get to the middle school level. It's a little bit more advanced. They get a little bit more. And then the high school level, they get the full ALICE training. So what the principals have done, we worked very well with them, is the first drill of the year, messages go out to the parents beforehand, this is what we're gonna be doing, it's gonna happen on this day. So it's planned. The second one, not so much planning, all right, but the kids have already had their instruction, they're ready. We have a lockdown drill. Message goes out to the parents afterwards. This is what we did today. If your child has any questions, so you can answer them. If you have any questions, contact us, we can help you. And then we build that up through the year, and we do it all over the next year. Again, it just builds it up, because we know we always have new students coming in.
Right.
So we have to start, start at the beginning every year. But so far, it seems to be working. We, I don't know, we haven't had any bad comments from the, negative comments from the principals regarding parents' reaction to it.
We also have developed standard letters for each of the principals to send out, so there's a consistency across the district.
I think it's very similar to what we would do with, with the first fire drill. New students into a school, new kindergarteners. We don't come in, we pull the fire alarm. We walk into their classroom, we let them know what we're gonna do, we'll let them know what it's gonna sound like, we'll try to describe it. Usually the, the teachers will describe it to the, to the students before we get there. But we like to send the firefighters into that classroom, generally the kindergarten, the first grade, let them know what we're gonna do, rather than just come in and pull a fire alarm. So I think it's, I think it's similar with the police department is doing with the ALICE program. Little, little steps.
Um, I have a couple of things. One, I know at the school that I work at, we have sound recordings of the fire drill sound and the, the lockdown sound. And so teachers can play those for themselves and for others. We did have a situation where somebody was uncertain if they were hearing and whether it was a fire drill or whether it was a lockdown. And that, you know, that's scary and confusing, especially for the adults that are supposed to be leading. So it just suggests that there might be some ways to give sound information to people that they can listen to, like on their computer or whatever. I wonder if there are any disadvantages to doing any sort of public training, and we're just having that conversation tonight. But is there any way that you're informing, you know, possible perpetrators, if you have a public training, on what we should be doing? So I just, I don't expect an answer to that, but, but I just wonder about that. But I also wonder if, is there any disadvantage to announcing every time that the drill is a drill versus not a drill? So that, so that students really know, this is a drill and we take it seriously, but we're not in actual danger right now.
Well, sorry, of every announcement, if you're doing an ALICE drill at a school, the initial announcement is, this is a drill, this is a drill, and then they go into the scenario. Reason being is, we don't want to pre-announce it every time, because that's when the students do get lackadaisical with it. We need a little bit of the surprise portion, so they're not expecting it. But everyone starts off with, this is a drill, this is a drill.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
It's a great program. Thank you. It's amazing to see you guys working together, so.
I have, I've had many teachers tell me that they're just so grateful to have options, which is exactly what, what you mentioned, that they didn't used to have options before. It was more hide and barricade, or, you know, just hide in the corner, and now they have choice. And they were very happy. The people told me that. I'm grateful for that. So thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Great. Any other?
Thank you, gentlemen. North End, we're so lucky to have all of you.
Doctor, did you want me to quickly touch on the?
Sure. So one other quick thing we've been doing, as you know, we have had tricky weather this year. And so one of the challenges has been what happens when there is a fire alarm. Not a, a drill, but for some reason, when the weather's really tricky. So we've been working really carefully.
So we're working on what we call a severe weather fire alarm policy. We're trying to get faculty and student back into the school as quickly as possible. In order to do that, we've worked with the principals, trained them on how to read the fire alarm panel. We've worked with the custodians. I met with all the, every custodian in town. I showed them what they should be looking for, what they should do, what they shouldn't do, and we put them through that training. Our spring fire drills, we're gonna work on that, that scenario. So how that would work quickly would be, in the event of alarm, the principal goes to the fire alarm panel. She reads the panel, she broadcasts that by radio to one of her custodians. The custodian goes to that area that she reads on the panel. The, the fire department is obviously being responded, because all your schools are tied directly into the fire department. Our dispatch will tell us exactly the area of the school that the alarm is coming in. If it matches what your principal is reporting back to our dispatch center, our fire alarm center, and says that we've located that area, we have a smoke detector activated, but there's no smoke or fire, that's reported to the units that are responding. At that time, the deputy, myself, the lieutenant in charge can make a determination. If they're comfortable with what they were just told, they can allow faculty and students to move back into another area of the school, more than likely the gymnasium. And then when the fire department does ride, they'll, they'll double confirm that. We're not gonna do it in every incident. Good weather, we're not gonna be concerned about that. We're talking about severe weather, those frigid temperatures that we had, torrential downpours where, you know, if they're outside, you know, too long, you're gonna be sending the students home. So we're working with the, all the principals of the schools. We're gonna be testing the high school, I believe, this coming week, to see how that works, and...
We don't want to give away a date, no.
Yeah. But again, it's, it's only gonna be possibly a few times a year that we really have to do, to worry about. We want to get them back into the school as quickly possible, because again, we know school is only a certain amount of hours a day. But again, we have to treat, every time we come to your school, we have to think that we're going through a fire.
Right.
Okay, so between 2012, 2016, in Massachusetts, they're averaging about a hundred forty-five school fires a year. About six million dollars worth of damage. So they do happen. Again, we don't want it to happen here. That's why we're, you know, very proactive in the school system. Some of the things that we are doing with the custodian staff is we just met with them this past vacation, and we went through, they went through the gas training program that we go through with Columbia Gas. We're also gonna be doing some fire extinguisher training with them. We're gonna teach them again about the sprinkler systems. In the event somebody maybe kicks a ball and breaks a sprinkler head. Because again, generally, we're, we're at your schools very, very quickly. But if we're on another call, we're in another part of town, there is a delay in us getting there. So the more that your staff is trained, the more the custodians know, it's just gonna help the whole situation, so.
I have a question about that. You said a hundred forty-five fires a year, six million dollars in damages. Do you have any numbers for fatalities or injuries?
That I get off the Department of Fire. I, I don't have any injuries that I saw in that or any, any fatalities. But that's just normally what they've had. And again, those can be classified as a, a small electrical fire, maybe a fire that was in the kitchen. But again, there are some major fires that, that make that number go up to that six. Lawrence had two serious fires, which were, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in loss. So most of the things that happen in school are small things. You know, they could be, um, set fires, accidental fires in the kitchen, things like that. So they do happen. So that's why we, we do, we do prepare, and we, you know, we do these fire drills and we get into the schools.
Thanks.
I remember like that, you know, I think the middle school had one that was a pretty frigid day.
Right.
That's what precipitated all of that.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Yeah, and my understanding of some of the, the damages is that there are sprinklers that go off, right? So that causes more damage than the fire quite often.
Right, water can cause quite a bit of damage, so.
But it's my understanding, we haven't had a fatality in a fire in a school in decades, right? Is that right? So that's good. I just think families should know that.
And again, here in North End, we have a fully sprinkled buildings, other than two schools. The alarm systems are tested regularly. We're, we're in doing the inspections, so it's, uh...
Appreciate it.
And Chief McCarthy, it's been, you know, I remember when we first had this situation, the middle school, you called around to other fire departments about what do you do in extreme weather? And they all said, we don't have any policy.
Well, again, I actually called down to the Fire Marshal's office. And again, the thing is, you have to evacuate the building. You have to.
But you, you are charting, you're charting policy and a procedure for the state, so thank you.
Whatever we can do to, to, to limit, because again, severe weather, it's not something we want people to be out in, so.
Right. Appreciate your innovative nature.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Well, I gotta say, since the police chief and I have only been a couple of years in our positions, but again, Dr. Price is, is working greatly with us, and we appreciate all the work and assistance you've given us, so we appreciate it.
It's been great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going to move back to our old business, starting with a second reading. And we have several policies here. And so I don't know if, um...
Councilor Egan.
Town Council Egan would like to come up to the hot seat.
Good evening. I think we can move, take them in order unless anybody objects. The first one is the J.I.C.H.
Yes, that, last time the school committee reviewed that, at the last meeting, you asked me to add some language to this policy. And the added language is highlighted in yellow, and it mainly was to deal with the cannabis and cannabis-related products. And also to make sure that the school buses were included in the areas that were, the drug use and the alcohol use is prohibited. I believe that was...
So do we want to move on to the other ones?
Yeah, I just want to make sure there are no other questions. Yeah, I think one at a time we probably should do, because I think they're all a little bit different. So there might be more questions for some than others.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the additions about adding cannabis and cannabis-related products to this. I think it's important. I guess my, my concern still is in the fact that if we have, high school students especially, that may be using cannabis for medical purposes, I'm just wondering if they're covered by this.
So it's my understanding that there's nothing in the law right now that allows cannabis to be used on school grounds. So I know that there's medical marijuana, and there's also other recreational marijuana. But it is my understanding that, that those laws do not extend to having the use or possession of marijuana on school property. Now, I know that in some instances, the, with regard to employees that use medical marijuana, there's a recent case that says there has to be some sort of discussion as to whether there's gonna be accommodation. But that's not to say that, that marijuana will be used on the school grounds.
But they could use it prior to coming to school, and they could be, quote unquote, under the influence of it.
So I, I think that this, I think if we look at this policy as to what it's intended to address, then I, I think that issue sort of gets put to rest, because this policy is really intended to address the, it says the illegal, unauthorized, or non-prescribed substance or drugs. So that's what it's intended to address, is when somebody is using a drug or alcohol or tobacco that is either illegal, unauthorized, non-prescribed. And so that's what I think this policy is intending to address, if, if we want to create a policy with regard to the use or the...
I think this policy addresses, if, if there's a student who drinks off-campus and comes on to, comes to a football game or basketball game drunk.
Right.
We're gonna address that, even if they drank off, off-campus. If a, a child has a recommendation from a doctor, two doctors under the law, and has used cannabis prior to coming on campus, is that person held to the same standard as the kid who drank and then came on campus under this policy?
So the policy says it addresses, I mean, it addresses non-prescribed substances and drugs on school. So I would say, so I would say that, I mean, I, I guess if you think about it in practical terms, if there, if a child is prescribed a drug that is from a doctor, and they have the doctor's note, and it's not occurring on school grounds, but they do have an authorized legal use of the drug, then it's an issue that has to be... I think it's difficult for the school to say, you can't use that if you have that doctor's note.
I agree. It's very difficult to, but first of all, marijuana is not, not prescribed. I mean, prescription is very specific, where a doctor prescribed a drug, you go to a pharmacy and you pick it up. When it comes to cannabis, a doctor, you know, writes a recommendation, the, the student, the patient takes it to the state, and they give you a card. So when it comes to cannabis, there's, there's no prescription. So that's why I don't think this, this prescribed thing gives that person cover. I don't, I don't...
Can we add medical recommendation, which is the language you said?
That's what I, I would just say that there needs to be some kind of carve-out here, because again, going to town meeting in, in, in January, it appeared that there is a high school student who uses medical cannabis after she spoke at town meeting. So I just think that there's no way to know for certain if there's other students using cannabis. But I do think that this policy, as it's written right now, would not, not cover that person, would protect that person.
So can we add, with the language, medical recommendation, unauthorized, non-prescribe? Add that language in to say that if the person has that medical recommendation?
That's the, that's the kind of protection I like to see.
Do you need the "and" a card from the state or whatever, whatever that card's called?
No, I, I would, you know, I, I don't have anything written down right now, but I'm sure we could come up with something that, and I, I wouldn't mind just, you know, kicking, kicking this policy to, to next week, and I'll be happy to, to draft something. But I don't, I don't sense to do it right now. I don't think I want to do it on the fly either.
I think it's incredibly important from the school side that we are very clear about this, because there is massive concerns about prescription medication floating into hands of kids who have not had it prescribed to them. It's a major issue in our communities. So I, I want to make sure that this is tight in order, if a kid claims, well, it's, it's, it's my prescription and they have it on campus. Like, it's really important that that not happen, because that undermines our ability as a school system to address that issue. I know it's a completely separate issue, but I would just ask, as you revise this, that, that this, this cannot be on campus in any way. We make it very clear. I just don't want to create any loopholes where when you're working with a family of something that, that is not above board, there's not a loophole in the policy. That's all I'm asking, having tried to enforce this in the past. You know, big concerns about students bringing their medication on school grounds and getting it, giving it to other students. So that's very important that we make sure, because that, that's like dealing drugs, so we need to make sure that we don't...
Well, doesn't it say, where does it say that you're supposed to basically turn it over to the nurse? The nurse, nurse administers it. Where does it say that?
I don't think it's in this policy. I think it's a different policy, yes.
So I just want to make sure we don't create a loophole where...
And honestly, I think we need to separate prescription drugs for, from cannabis, because cannabis is not a prescribed drug at all. It's, it's in a class line unto itself.
But at the same time, we don't want to allow it to be on, on school grounds.
Right.
If you, if you don't judge me for, for another meeting, I'll, I'll call some language for you.
It's fine.
Can you work with Suzanne?
Sure, absolutely.
When you do that, can I ask it in the title, versus alcohol, tobacco and other drug use? I know you put "other" in at a bunch of places, it's just.
I actually typed it online, somehow I was able to type it on.
I thought it was on there, I apologize for that one.
I did that this afternoon. I didn't, I don't know how I had live access to it, but I did. So, I typed that in today. It's the only thing that let me in, I think it's because it says "file" and a little flag or something, I don't know. Okay, so, we're going to revisit that one next week. Any other comments from the crowd on that, the committee having?
Is there anything that we, I mean, hoping that we don't have an incident in the next two weeks?
It's next week.
Next week, okay. I'm thinking we're a couple of weeks.
Right, other than we have our.
As soon as we vote on them, do they, even though the people don't properly know or something? Just curious.
Well, they're notified through this process or public hearing?
And until we vote, then what we had before is in action.
All right, the next one is the teaching about, and this is where we added the language again, I believe.
Yes, this is, and I did add the other to the title on this one.
I H A M A.
And cannabis and cannabis-related products was added to this and other drugs, the word "other drugs" was also added to the. And that was essentially the only changes from last week.
So, unless we, do we need to do anything differently here? Same, the same thing applies here, Mr. Trissey, or?
Well, I mean, I would just, for my own, this is my own personal preference. I would prefer the title to read, "Teaching about alcohol, tobacco, cannabis and other drugs." That's my opinion on it. I'm not super passionate about it, but I would prefer to separate cannabis from other drugs in that situation.
Other than that.
Just the title.
Revision, is there anything else we would need to revise?
No.
From anybody's perspective? Then maybe we could get this one settled?
I'd be happy to have a friendly amendment just to the headline, to be teaching about alcohol, tobacco, cannabis and other drugs.
Okay. So, can someone make a motion with that little change in mind to?
Didn't you just, he just made it.
Okay, that was a motion, I didn't realize that was a motion.
So, just changing the title.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so, motion by Mr. Trissey and a second by Mr. McDevitt.
Does the first bullet need to include that language?
In accordance with the.
No, but to prevent delay.
Oh, down the, yes, okay. Yep. And then the second one has it, the third one has it. Okay. So, hopefully, we can accept that as an amended motion that includes that second entry there.
I'd amend that motion to include that as well.
Okay, so, can we maybe do a roll call, starting with you, Mr. Trissey?
Aye.
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 And aye, great, thank you. I H A M A has revised, thank you.
I think you can do all the next ones together.
Yes, as I say, the next one is a cluster of them.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, it was a motion just to amend the title.
And the first bullet.
And then, so, yeah.
So, now we need a motion to approve, thank you.
Okay. So, I moved to amend it and that was adopted?
Yes.
So, now I would move that we adopt the policy I H A M A as amended.
I'll second that.
Excellent, motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Mr. McDevitt. I'll start with you, Mr. Trissey.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Five oh again. Okay, now, the next grouping.
Can I just ask us to pause? Just J I H C, if we're going to title I H A M A with alcohol, tobacco, cannabis and other drugs, I think we should be consistent in J I C H.
The one that we talked about a few minutes ago, yes.
Just in terms of labeling it. And we may want to just see if there's any other policies that also.
Because I did look at some of the cross-referencing before, I'll do that again, we can do that again as well.
So, when we adopt the next week, we'll just make that amended, that change now?
Okay.
Because there's a bunch that are cross-referenced.
Yep, great. That's why I think I had her add this in the cross-referencing, here it is, yep. Great, thank you. So, the next policies are grouped together. This is the Pregnancy Fairness Act, Massachusetts Pregnancy Fairness Act, where that language was added to several policies that are somewhat interrelated. And they're all here.
So, they're all, and pregnancy.
Right, pregnancy is now one of the protected classes that have to.
And pregnancy-related conditions, yeah.
And equal protection.
There's five of them.
Yep.
Yep.
Will you move those as a verdict?
Yes.
So, I would move that we adopt policy A C, G B A, G C F, J B, J F B B.
That's it.
G B E.
No, no, that's different, that's different. Not that one.
No, G D.
I second that.
All right.
As written enough.
Yes, thank you. Motion by Ms. McCard, second by Mr. Trissey. Start with Mr. Trissey.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Next, we have proposed policy, this is one that does not exist right now. This is a new policy that the state has started to make suggestions about. And this is the crowdfunding policy. And we had a discussion about that last week a little bit. That's the next one up here. If I can find it. So, that's what we're looking at, any discussion?
Just have a quick question. It says, solicitation of personal items, codes, nutritional snacks, et cetera, may, shall only be to benefit students directly. So, I mean, I know there's codes for kids and.
Food drives.
There are, you know, we have food drives at the holidays and I think there's been some, you know, for the homeless with socks and toiletries and Lazarus house and things of that nature. I mean, are those included, excluded? How does that fit into this?
I think that, my sense of this is that if you look at the top sentence, I don't know if you feel the same way, is that, and the use of crowdfunding for school-related purposes, right? So, from my perspective, that's when we're donating to the school, not community services.
Community, okay.
That's right, is what my, is that, do you agree with that?
I do, and I think it's, and this is for relating to additionally online solicitations and the use of crowdfunding services. So, it's a very specific policy to deal with one type of fundraising.
Which is under the note at the end, though, they articulate the crowdfunding services are defined as any online service used for the solicitation of good services, et cetera. Okay.
So, I have a few comments, questions, thoughts about this. One is, I wonder if we have teachers who are doing specific fundraising that are not crowdfunded? Like, do we have specific teachers that are doing bake sales to buy something for their classroom or doing yard sales to buy something for their classroom? Other sorts of fundraising that are specific to a specific classroom? If we, if we don't have that going on, or do we have any policies around that? That would be my first.
The one thing that I'd say that this committee's done a good job of cleaning up over the years is people coming forward with the big donations to be accepted by school committee. I'm not aware of anything, like the yard sale.
We can ask principals, but.
We can ask.
So, my sense of that is that, that our needs haven't changed, but there's, there's an opportunity that teachers are now taking advantage of in a way that it just wasn't immediately available. So, I'm wondering if we really have a need for individual teachers to do individual funding for individual classrooms. I'm not, I'm not sure that crowdfunding, fundraising is really the direction we want to go in. It concerns me that we've spent a lot of time in North Andover working on equity and different schools have different abilities to raise funds. I'm not sure that we want to be approving crowdfunding and that we might want to have some sort of a blanket policy that actually disapproves crowdfunding.
Without even asking the principal, the superintendent, which is what it says here, just saying, "We don't do it in North Andover." Is that what you're saying?
I'm suggesting that we can have a conversation about that. You know, and I'm wondering what doors in Pandora's boxes we're opening by doing this. And I'm wondering, you know, if I have a, you know, a second grader, which I don't, but if I have a second grader and that second grade teacher is really great at raising funds and maybe gets, you know, a lot of really great things in that classroom. And then I have another second grader with a different teacher, if I'm unhappy about that, because this different teacher is focusing his or her energy on working with the materials that are at hand, rather than going out and crowdsourcing for funds. I don't know how that might affect individual schools, how that might affect from school to school. And I know I'm saying some uncomfortable things. But I'm, I'm not sure that we need to go approving crowdsourced, crowdfunding before we have those kind of conversations.
So, as of now, there really is no policy and we all know that it's happening within our schools. So, my only thought is, I think that that's a much bigger conversation, which you absolutely, we can actually structure over the next few weeks, if that's what you all want to do. But this would give us more oversight of crowdsourced, crowdfunding that is happening. I can tell you, I, there are a number of teachers at this very moment who have a crowdsourced up right now and had not been approved by me or the principals. So, I would encourage you to, if you want to do that conversation now or next fall, but right now, we have really no jurisdiction over it, which I think we want something.
Because right now, they're fundraising for something that you're already having a plan to put curriculum in place for.
Or, you know, I mean, yeah. So, I just, I just would put it out there, you're more than welcome to have that conversation.
I actually agree with Ms. McCard's, the sentiment that you're raising. I know when we've discussed the playgrounds, for example, the ability to raise funds at certain schools a lot easier than some other schools. So, I'm very sensitive to the point you're raising. I would just think that crowdfunding could actually help a lot of the schools. They can't raise the money as easily. That's just my point of view. But I think what you're saying, your overall tone, I think is something we need to be aware of as far as the equity issue goes, especially at some elementary schools. But I kind of agree that if the superintendent and the principal are signing off on this, then I'm doing it just like that. I think that they're taking a good, hard look at it and seeing if it makes sense. So, I would support adopting the policy, but I definitely appreciate where you're coming from on it.
Well, because right now, it is a little bit of the wild west, there's nothing, you can do whatever you want, yes.
So, can I just, so if, let's just say, teacher McDevitt, you know, decides that they want to do something, right? According to the policy, they ask, they meet with the principal, they let them know whether or not they get approval or not. I don't necessarily think it's required. They then come to you and you say, "No." They then, it looks like, can, I guess petition the school committee for approval? Is that, or could petition us?
Is that what that says? Do you agree with that?
It doesn't seem like, the only thing I think is like, I think if you have the authority and then like with certain other things like.
Says the superintendent should have final authority to approve.
Right, yeah.
It says superintendent or.
But then later on, it says, require superintendent or school committee approve in accordance.
If the superintendent requires school committee approval.
Yeah.
Because wouldn't it, if we're approving it, wouldn't it be at that, what, thousand-dollar mark?
We're only approving, we're accepting.
That's what we usually do as a school committee, accept the gift.
And I didn't need this policy to provide for an appeal process. So, it sounds like what you're saying is that this policy gives a teacher or an individual an appeal. If the superintendent, the principal and the superintendent say, "No," then the school committee is the next level. It could be.
Or it could be that they come to us first, right?
But the policy doesn't state, that's not what this policy states. I mean, you could come up with a policy that stated that, but you could add that into this.
No, I don't want to do that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I like that it's the superintendent, you know, has the ability to do that. What threw me was the "or" school committee approved.
But it says, under which, the superintendent would say that, to the principal, what circumstances, under which online fighting, protest, or require superintendent or school committee approval. So, the superintendent's still in charge of determining that.
Superintendent says the principal can approve, or that it has to come to superintendent or school committee.
So, the first, the principal might say, "Hey, this is beyond me, I'd rather have my superintendent."
Superintendent might say, "You know what, this is beyond me, I'd really like the school committee to weigh in on it."
Right. I think that's, that sort of gives you that flexibility.
And I think if I understand these sites correctly, why it's super attractive is that you're not just preying on the families. I'm praying, I know that's a little harsh. You're not just soliciting the families.
So, I don't, I mean, I think that's.
It goes to, sorry. So, anybody who, there are people out there who don't have children in the schools who want to contribute, this is an opportunity for them and that's why I think people go that, oh, stop, go that route. I'm guessing that's why these have become so rampant.
I wouldn't echo Dr. Price's on it, and I agree with you, Helen, too. I remember at a time when there was an equity and it was little things over time that built up where, we're going back almost a decade now, but there were schools that had more and less. And I think that, I think that the administration and the school board has worked really hard on cleaning that up.
Right.
And I would, I can only speak for myself, I'll speak with, but you can jump in if you agree, Dr. Gilligan. I mean, that would be part of the lens we would use in approval of this, is to make sure that it didn't create this massive disparities. I mean, you know, one of the folks who's crowdfunding the most right now is a substantially separate special education program at the middle school. And they have very specific needs for that population. That's different than a one-second grade teacher who's crowdfunding over another second grade teacher. So, it's just a lens that, but again, this is definitely a conversation. I think our feeling is, right now, we have no ability. And I would, I would encourage you to pass the M A S C's recommendation. And then if we want to come back, whether this spring or next fall, and look at this more, right now, it's concerning that there is no oversight.
And/or approve, you could approve the policy and then come up with a procedure that's like a flow chart or documents, whatever's appropriate.
Or we could say, "We're stopping that now and we're going to have a conversation about it so that we're not trying to get the horse back in the barn after it's already out the door."
By saying, "At this time, we do not allow crowdsourcing."
There are implications of that. And there are programs and areas that rely on this right now, given our per pupil expenditure. So, I, that's a conversation that if that's what you all decide to do now, I just, there will be implications of that felt very quickly, which, you know, that's why you make policy.
Well, and it's why we ask questions, too.
Yep, absolutely. But my recommendation is to at least give us some authority and then come back and revisit, but it's obviously your decision.
So, really stupid question, but you know, for any that are going on right now, are they grandfathered or they get shut down as of tomorrow morning?
Or considered.
Yes. Or considered, do they then have to come and say?
But if there's no, right now, there's no policy.
So, I would argue.
I'm sorry. There's no policy.
There's zero.
Do you have, so do you believe you have the authority or, Susan, do you believe that the superintendent has the authority to shut that down if she wanted to? Or if she wanted to? In the absence of a policy saying, absolutely none, if we just let it go as it is, does she have the authority, in your opinion? And again, if you don't answer this question, don't answer it. But that's where we're at right now, there's nothing going on right now. So, I think we should adopt something. I know you're saying it's tough to put the horse back in the barn, but right now, the horse is running wild, so it's.
I mean, the other question I would have for you is a procedural one, to put a policy that we're shutting it down without a first reading and a second reading and allowing people to come forward, I think that it would take you at least another two weeks to do it.
We'd have to draft something new.
You'd have to put a policy forward that said, "This is not allowed, I'm not there." I mean, I think this is a good place to start. I'm happy to continue that conversation, Helen, but I think this is something that I feel very comfortable with our principals and the superintendent overseeing. So, I'll make a motion to adopt policy, my eyes have gone.
G B E B D.
I will second that.
I'm holding out, I'm holding out.
So, that is a motion.
So that is a motion by Mr. Trissey, a second by Ms. Vitski Lynch. I think we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Trissey?
Before we do.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Discussion, yes. I beg your pardon.
I have more questions.
Yes.
So if we adopt this, like, how can we, how can we know? How can we as a school committee, or maybe we don't need to know? This is really unclear for me, this is really new territory, but I'm being told that there's this fundraising that's going on that's critical for our schools and our programs that we offer right now. But I don't know anything about that. Is there a way, like, would this be reported to us? Would we know who's doing crowdfunding, fundraising and, you know, what they're raising money for? I feel like as a school committee member, if there are needs of our schools that are being addressed this way, that we, that I would like to be aware of that. So I'm wondering if we, if we adopt this, would we be getting information, more information about what's going on?
I would think it's, yeah, I mean, now if we adopt this policy, the superintendent, the principal will have to know what's going on with crowdfunding.
But will they tell us, is her question?
That's something that.
Would they have a responsibility to tell us? Do we have any right to know?
I would say so. I mean, why would they? I mean, I don't, as simple as it comes to, you know, real sense of their personal matters, whenever asked a question of the superintendent or the superintendents, they're probably forthcoming with information. I don't see why you wouldn't hold back information. Can you picture a scenario why, where you or?
If it's on, if it's being crowdfunded, it's out there.
Right, right. Well, because I went on one of them. But it's not out there, but I don't know about it.
Yeah, exactly. Without a policy, you wouldn't know.
Unless you're checking all the sites.
If you ask me now, I would, I couldn't do it.
Well, I mean, that's what the, I don't know, maybe fifth paragraph is about that, you know, anybody who's using crowd services must disclose in writing to the superintendent the names of all individuals whom the employer has directly solicited in any manner, oral, electronic, written, and then the superintendent has to maintain those. So we then would have a record, and I would think and hope in the budgeting process, if we added to our checklist what crowdsourcing happened. And if somebody said, you know what, we did this for, I'm just making this up, musical equipment, right, that we had to have, and we would look at it and say, this is there.
Yeah, and I do see this as a way to equalize some fundraising. Like, right now, for example, you know, there are sports booster clubs and there's, you know, music association booster club, and they raise funds for things because they're independent nonprofits and they can do that separate from the schools, and then we accept those gifts. Not everybody has that. I mean, Robotics doesn't have that. The Drama Guild doesn't have, you know, a group that's doing that regularly all over the place. So I mean, so that might be another positive use of, you know, how teachers who are working with different programs can, you know, can access funds for those programs without having a parent group that's supporting it. So there's certainly good things that can come, but it's, this is really new territory, and I have a lot of concerns about it.
There's something else, actually, that, Attorney Egan, you brought up when I talked to you ages ago about this, which is that the teachers or the individuals who do the crowdsourcing request have to then kind of show through how that money was utilized as well to protect themselves.
Right, right. There's a lot of disclosure. When you solicit donations and accept donations, then everybody, then a public employee has to disclose what the, where they came from, what they're used for.
And what happens with any leftovers or whatever.
Right. And this, you know, having a policy in place is then, the school has something to point to. This is the policy, you have to comply with the policy in order to do this. And that's nice to have. It's nice to be able to, it's helpful to run and sort of like hold people accountable and also give, it's always also nice to say, these are the rules, because ambiguity is difficult.
And it gives them some protection as well, that they followed the procedure correctly.
Exactly. This is the policy, I comply with the policy, and this policy, as I had said earlier, was drafted in conjunction with the MASC, in conjunction with the State Ethics Commission Attorney. And so they came up with this to sort of protect everybody and to make sure everybody complies with the law in terms of the crowdfunding.
More questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Picard. Appreciate it. So we do have a motion on the table and a second. I'll do a roll call, starting with Mr. Trissey.
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt.
Aye.
Ms. Picard.
Aye.
Miss? Aye. Okay. But I do want us to note that we want to get this out there to people so that they know, and then.
We meet with principals Monday, we'll let them know about it.
That's great, and then we can look at how we want to discuss further.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Then we have, the last one is I L D, a nice short little one of letters. Student Submission to Education Surveys and Research. This is also new, and this is something that our district has participated in without any policy, various surveys and things, so it'd be good to have something in place. Is there any action here?
Keep going.
Yeah, student submission to educational surveys and research.
I'll make a motion to approve policy I L D as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? Hearing none, then also do a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. And I think that is all of them. We will then revisit next week the first one that we discussed. Thank you. Thank you for all the patience in the crowd.
You might want to stay up here.
Yes.
Stay up here, okay. I will. So just, if your indulgence is on the next one.
Yeah, we're going to move to the next one, exactly.
So we decided, actually, and I really appreciate your patience, Rick and Nikki Murphy, who've come up too. So one of the things that, at our last meeting, there were some significant questions about this partnership and a memorandum of understanding between the schools and the youth center. And we're not even asking for a vote at this point, we just thought it would be great. Thank you very much, Rick Gorman, for coming, and Nikki Murphy, our social emotional learning director, to come and just talk about why this has come forward and the incredible partnership that we have had for many, many years with the youth center and our desire to ensure that we can work collaboratively going into the future. So really, this is a conversation about, that came out of the MOU, and we are not asking for any formal action at this point so that we can just kind of hear everyone and have a good discussion. Does that make sense?
Excellent, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
So basically, this past fall, when obviously Nikki came on board, we were doing a lot of work as we always have, and both of us discussed that, you know, we probably should formalize what's really been in existence for 30 years. So at that point in time, we talked to Andrew Mailer and Jen, and obviously Suzanne got involved in terms of possibly putting together a memorandum of understanding. So the history of this is, when I started here in 1988, George Blaisdell was the superintendent at that time, and he was very active of us being actively involved with the schools. And that relationship has continued every superintendent up until Jen. And basically, we have one staff member that is.
And including Jen.
Including Jen. Jen's been a huge support.
He said that to me as soon as I met with him the first time.
Thanks for correcting me on that. So we have one staff person, our support services coordinator over the last 30 years, which has been about 11 of them over the 30 years. The most recent one is Laura Stevens. And that person actually is in the school system 15 hours a week. We're predominantly at the middle school and at the high school. We do a variety of different activities. We run the girls' groups or co-lead the girls' groups at both the middle school and the high school with guidance or guidance interns throughout the years. We have established, reestablished a boys' group at the middle school this year, which is something we used to do at the high school, myself and peak uncanny. We have been involved with the advisory program at the high school. We are involved with tracking of students, information and referral sharing with teachers and administrators. We've been involved in some of the crisis intervention over the years. The most drastic one was the unfortunate one, when we had two seventh graders in the late 90s commit suicide, and we were hands-on with that whole situation. We've been involved with the conflict resolutions at both schools in terms of assisting teachers and kids in that aspect. And then we also consult with teachers. Our most recent consultations is with some middle school teachers. We have a very challenging group of seventh graders right now, and we've been kind of working with how to, how to reach these kids from a community perspective as well as the school perspective. We also sit on a number of committees. We sit on the team consult in the middle school. We sit on the SAT at the high school. We're on CCI, which is the Schools Community, and the Courts, which meets four times a year, Health Advisory Committee, and then obviously the BRC. We work close collaboration. The people we work the most with are the assistant principals at both schools. Nothing against the principals, but the assistant principals are always hands-on, we're dealing directly with them, and the guidance departments at both those. We also work hands-on with the focus program. So basically, what we've been doing over the years is, I don't want it to be portrayed that we're like, you know, they're throwing us information that we don't need to know. This is, the sharing of information is information on what we do need to know. And it's gotten worse over the years, quite frankly. So if something was to drastically happen, say, at the middle school, which was an example this year, not drastically, but a real issue at the middle school, our feeling is the communication to the youth center is important because that's where they're going in the after school. And if they're going to the dance that night, and if we're unaware of something that, you know, someone got suspended for fighting with somebody, and I've got that kid who was the victim coming to the dance, and I got this, and I know no information on that, it's kind of a killer. So over the years, you know, we've had a number of those type situations. So what we've been able to do is confidentially, the only two people from my department that are actually able to have this information is the support services coordinator, which is Laura Stevens right now, and myself. Just to get an idea, Laura Stevens is a mental health counselor, masters level. Myself, I have a masters in community social psychology, so we're obviously very experienced with this, and it's been a really nice partnership. I think the question comes sometimes, and probably over the 30 years, we probably had 10 parents over 30 years saying, why does the youth center need to know? And I know one of the questions that might come up is, do people have the option to opt out of possibility for that, which obviously, we would be fine if that was the choice. I think we get more people, tons of people, that think the relationship between the school department and the youth center is vital, just like you just, our predecessors here, we had with the police department and the fire department. The collaboration is unique. We think it's the most unique relationship in the state in terms of a municipality working with a, with a school. And it was, you know, Nikki coming on board hadn't seen this and was pretty impressed of what we were trying to do. Some of the communities that we've consulted with, like Andover Youth Services is working directly. Bill Fahy used to work for me, so he started out in this whole thing, and he's actually been able to work with. Other communities, you're separate entities, and I think if we're really going to do what's best for our kids in this community, we've got to work together. We're not trying to abuse that information. Quite frankly, we don't need to know everything. But when it does affect both sides, and it goes both ways. So we have been very informative, and I think Chet Jackson can attest to this, that, and Steve Wrigley, we've been able to bring information to the school department that was very helpful in giving them the heads up on things that are going on. Because the reality is, the school department sees them six hours a day, we see them a lot more than that, weekends, and the, God forbid, summer, that we're already preparing for now, where everybody else goes on, Chet goes on vacation, and we got to, we got to continue to work. So I think what we're trying to do, and I'll let Nikki speak to this, is that we're just trying to kind of clean this up a little bit. And it is ironic that we've been doing this for 30 years without a memorandum of understanding. That's probably the fault of myself and every previous superintendent. To actually finalize it, but I just think it's unique. I'm sure you guys are going to have questions on this, and I'm open to any of the questions, and I'm letting you digest it, but I do think this is really good for our community.
I don't have much to add because Rick just covered most of it, but thank you comprehensively. I would just say that when we met in the, I think it was in the summer when I first started. We were talking about just the ways that we could partner around social emotional learning, and then he gave me the history that he just shared with all of you, and I do, it is to me, one of the most unique relationships, and I think beneficial ones, that I've ever seen between a youth center and a school system. So I think that the concern came out of, there wasn't any kind of formal document in place. And so I don't think that, at least to my knowledge, there weren't people complaining, well, why are they involved and all that kind of stuff? Because, again, they've been involved for so many years in a successful partnership with the school system, but we felt.
But I also think, we also felt that, we're just, and as you all know, we're in a different age now.
Right.
So the fact that nobody was complaining, I think both of us sat there and said, well, there's going to be a complaint. Or there's going to be a question, not a complaint, be a question. Why not get ahead of it?
And that's sort of what came out of this, was why don't we formalize this process and make sure that we're covering all our bases and that legally there are any issues, especially around confidentiality and that kind of stuff, so. But we both agree that it's.
I mean, I also think this was because of the incredible partnership in the summer programs, too. This became, yeah.
So we've done working with the special ed department, and obviously that was a necessity to share information, again, appropriate information, and the success that we had, and the feedback we got from parents because of the connection. So I just think we're, I love what you're all doing with the social emotional learning stuff. It's right down our alley at the youth center. We believe that that is vital. I mean, we can talk everything about math and English and everything else, but right now, it's tough being a kid growing up in everywhere, not just North Andover, and the more that we can assist in that, the better. We want the most well-rounded kid we possibly can get.
And even the fact that we're intermingling our staff and providing trainings as well, what we know, providing to your staff and vice versa, I think that's a significant component as well.
Any questions on some of the things we're doing or anything?
This is really helpful.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is when we started this three weeks ago, I was under the impression it had to do with the expansion of the summer program with your students, and I didn't even think of basically all the stuff you've been doing. This is really where we needed to start, so this was extremely helpful.
Yeah, I think we have a little bit, I mean, I think we do really good with social media, but it was a little bit of a PR stuff that we need to, we need to kind of sell ourselves a little bit more what we do with the school system. Part of Jen and Andrew Mailer's piece has been collaboration, networking, and I think this is a perfect example of that. And I actually, got to be honest with you, I think kids like that, that you think that, oh, they don't, they don't want to know that the youth center knows, but there's a real connection, like, oh, did you talk to Cheryl Romano today? Or did you, did you see Mr. Jackson today? And I think there's a connection knowing that we're all on the same page.
And that you all care about them and what's happening in their lives, yeah, absolutely. This is very helpful today.
Great.
Any other questions or comments?
So just for process, you will digest this, you'll take a look at it some point in time.
So I think we can put it on for a vote at the next meeting, if that's all right with you guys.
So that's next week.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the support.
Actually, Mr. Gorman, would you be willing to hang around for a few minutes? We're talking about vaping. I would just be curious as to what you're running into there.
We're skilled in that area.
At the youth center as well.
Unfortunately, have dealt with a lot of this.
Yeah, so if you don't mind.
I'd like to stick around for that.
Would you mind? I think that would be furthering. That is, that's why, that's why I asked him to stay. So you guys can come right back up?
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any further questions?
I think we already did it, so, yes. Thank you for that, it was perfect, thank you. So we don't have any documents here, just, we had a discussion, I'm sure you told everyone last week, or three weeks ago, about this nationwide, statewide, townwide concern. And so we were curious to hear about, and Dr. Gilligan gave us an update from, but we'd love to hear you guys talk a little bit about that. we'd love to hear you guys talk a little bit about that.
Is there anything, just, I know Mr. Gilligan, Dr. Gilligan gave a lot of context last meeting. I went back and gave a peek, knowing I had to come back tonight to talk about it. So I know he comprehensive went through a lot of the stuff the school department does, high school, middle school, so is there anything specific to kind of narrow this as opposed to what you're looking for?
I think a great thing that happened is, just in the last couple of days, Dr. McQuaid sent out the middle school message, which had not gone out prior to that point, whereas there had been communications from you a couple of times this year, Mr. Jackson. So that, I think, was great. So maybe just talking a little bit about how you arrived at the letter and what you think.
Yeah, sure. I'll go first, Steve, if you don't mind. I think early in the year, I think it was around December when we sent some information out to teachers and parents. You know, I've gotten, maybe talked about two or three parents just on this topic throughout the year. Obviously, Mr. McDevitt, one of them, I think at flag football back in the fall, and a few other people. So, you know, being in such a talented district that we have with student services, guidance, social-emotional learning, you know, and Rick just talked about sometimes getting out all the good, positive things that you do and educational opportunities we have for students and parents. We don't always do a great job of that. It's something we're always looking to do better and connect to different groups that we may not connect to all the time. So, we made it a point to put some information out, have some conversations, educate. I think we've learned even through the last, you know, couple months, in talking to our school nurse and Cheryl Barzac, there's a lot of good information out there. We're gonna have Diane Knight from the director of Northeast Tobacco come on our 5-9 faculty meeting, and with our school resource officer, assistant principals, kind of do a little 15-minute, hopefully 15-minute, because we'll need the time for some other things, a little educational update for our staff. You know, and I think as a community issue, vaping, you know, whether it's marijuana, whether it's cigarettes, you know, a few decades ago, or coming up most recently, these are community concerns, and what we're doing to educate and support our members while they're here, and, you know, where they go after, and what they're doing in their non-structured time, we wanna do our best to, you know, support and educate. You know, so a couple of things, our wellness department also is going back to look in how they can do in, improve their life skills class that happens in grade nine. You know, initial talks took place, yesterday was our collaboration day, so yesterday, too. So, you know, we're always thinking about ways to improve and communicate.
I would have to echo at the middle school similar things, thinking that we are sometimes the younger sibling, literally, of the high school students. So a lot of the same things in a younger version. Again, communicating with parents, as you mentioned this week, about some of the dangers of vaping. I think that vaping and e-cigarette retailers have unfortunately done a very good job advertising and marketing, and they make it look fun, and a lot of, lot of the research I consult, cute covers and flavors and things like that, which are very dangerous, obviously draws for children, especially young children. Even the idea that I can hear a student say something like, well, at least it's not tobacco, is something that is so miss, in, such misinformation. So getting the information out to parents, getting the information out to teachers to what to look for. Similarly, we're planning to add something with our Officer Caffrey or Officer Logan of just bringing in some samples. This is what they look like, this is what you can look for. Continuing our hallway visibility and vigilance for teachers, and just knowing that it's a concern, working with our nursing staff to have them, just after they sent out a letter with the principal, they sent additional information to staff of some of the recent research. So I would say what the high school is doing as well.
Yeah. And I think we're communicating together. I think, you know, having some conversations over the last two weeks, you know, sharing some practices, that's how we learn. We learn from each other, we learn by having conversations with our district staff, getting feedback and improving things. I also wanna say, it was great having our public service people here tonight, Chief Gray, Chief McCarthy, Deputy Graham Rowe, and Lieutenant Folds, who I came up with doing some star's work around school safety. Our school resource officer, and they've done a fantastic job this year, just to echo that a little bit with Officer Caffrey, having Officer Logan, and hopefully welcoming Officer Enright full-time to the high school when Officer Caffrey returns. You know, after about February, we had some increased visibility, and our school resource officer plays such a vital role at the high school and the middle school. You know, being around, being able to go into bathrooms, be able to go check doors, be in the parking lot if that's a concern, and do other things besides having those conversations when tough issues come up, be a resource for students, for parents, for teachers that may have questions as parents. You know, I think that positive visibility and role takes a very positive place in our schools. We hadn't had as much of that earlier in the year. I don't know about the middle school, I can only imagine, because working with Officer Caffrey, who should be commended eight more times for the amount of work she's done throughout the year. So we're excited just to have that piece back, you know, even over the last couple of weeks, being a little bit more visible. I've spent more time being about, out and about with our assistant principals, who have had to pick up that, in addition to getting in the classes and doing their other supervision responsibilities and learning and growing of the new team. You know, it's been great to kind of pitch in and do what's best to provide the best education for our kids, so, you know, we're, we're all working together.
The other thing I would say is that we're gonna be bringing forward at our next meeting, the revision of the student handbook, which if you remember, for the first time ever in North Andover history, we have one student handbook pre-K to 12, which was a significant change last year. Pretty much the major substantive changes in the handbook are about vaping, and making sure that it's really clear in the handbook that vaping is, is not permitted in our schools, and what are the consequences for that. That was, there's almost no other substantive changes, but we really tried to get very concrete as a district. And the elementary principals were involved in the conversation and quite happy that these gentlemen are the ones who are dealing with it a little bit more than they were. But it's really a K-12 approach here in terms of, so it is, it is, it will be coming forward in the handbook next week.
Dr. Price, if I could just add one thing, I did get a note from Cheryl Barzac, because we talked about this incredible collaboration. I think many of you know Cheryl is pretty well-respected statewide, one of the initial pilots with Esper. The other night, she, I wouldn't say she, she hosted and coordinated an event with Diana Knight at North Andover High School for school nurses. We had school nurses come to meet on this issue from 40 different communities, including all of our nurses at North Andover High School for an hour and a half the other night. So, you know, that type of collaboration, and I think because it's, you know, not just a North Andover issue, it's, it's everywhere.
It's a community issue.
And in fact, when I was, hadn't been away in a long time, I was down in Florida, we were at this beach, and I was talking to a 17-year-old who's graduating early from high school. And I said, what's the biggest problem in high school? And she said, the jeweling, you know.
This was in Florida?
This was in Florida, and it was just interesting, and I, you know, and it was, it was an interesting conversation, but I think things like Cheryl Barzac bringing 40 communities to North Andover.
You can never truly go on vacation, can you, Dr. Gilligan?
Not without talking about school. But at the same time, I think that's just, you know, another piece. I'd be also interested to see what Rick sees at the youth center and talks with parents. I know you do a lot of this work.
So to give an applaud to these guys here, so this is a big problem in our community, and I probably think we at the youth center were probably in it early, just because I think when you're outside of school, there's more apt, he has things, so right in September, I think we met with Chet Brook and Scott, and we kind of, going to our past conversation, we actually were able to relay some information that Chet and his team was able to actually act on and, and actually address the issue. We had the same thing with Steve and Cheryl down at the middle school, where, you know, they were giving us some information, we were giving them a little bit of information about it, and we're able to deal with it. I love the proactiveness that we're dealing with it. Not all school communities are doing this, by the way. I'm involved with a number of other school systems, and I don't think they're as proactive as us. A couple of things we're talking about, we gotta educate. We're trying to educate the kids at the youth center, all around, even about the consequences, like, you know, kids coming in, oh, they can't arrest me at the high school if I'm vaping, it's legal. And then, you know, just kind of explaining, well, what's legal and what's not legal on school grounds, et cetera. Educating parents is the big thing. So parents are clueless about the vaping.
That's right.
Just so everybody knows. And the more we do as a community to try to address that issue, I think all the better. But what I'm really excited about, these two schools that we work with on a regular basis, they're on top of this, they're addressing it, and I, I think we're gonna, it's not gonna go away, it's gonna be here, and I'm sure, just like other things, they will have peaks and valleys, but I think we're at least addressing it. I think the kids know we're on to it now, too, which is a whole nother thing, and, you know, hopefully we'll see it. But I really love the response from the school department, as well as the community, and at least not burying their hands on, their heads in the sand on this one and, and trying to address it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I do. So I think first, you know, I commend you guys, the three of you, and obviously the rest of our school faculty, with adapting and modifying the wellness program and kind of putting that education out there, because I don't know who just said it, but somebody said, you know, they don't think of it as, as being harmful, right?
Right.
It's just missed, right? That's all it is. And in many cases, it can be much, much more significant and much more harmful for, for them. I love the fact that it's kind of going into the handbook, and I'm excited, you know, for that. A little bit of a question, once we have a memorandum of understanding, is there anything with the handbook and the rules that kind of there that then, is it kind of done it over once it's at the youth center?
Yeah, we would not move into our school rules being enforced.
Okay. So, so my kind of follow-up question is, I, I don't remember exactly, I know I've signed it, but when my sons...
School handbook?
Youth center.
Whatever.
Everything.
But when my sons go to the youth center, you know, there is basically a code of conduct.
There is. So we've had to, just like what you're doing, your handbook, our rules without actually explicitly specify vaping.
Okay.
Which before was, you know, drugs, alcohol, but, you know, we've gotta get as specific as that, because they fight you on whether it's a drug, not a drug, legal, illegal, so we have to just be right on top of it and mention it.
Okay. And I guess my, my, I don't know, two other points, but, I mean, we've had Liam come and speak about it, and spoken to him kind of offline and publicly as well. We've seen it on, you know, on social media out there. I mean, the students, the parents are all basically saying that it's a big problem, right? And it's a problem in the schools, they're hearing, and I don't have someone at the middle school, good luck next year, love him, Mr. Jackson, but that it's, you know, it's rampant in the bathrooms. I've had kids say it's happening in the classrooms. And so I guess my question is, you know, if that's true, and I don't know if it is, what support do we have for our teachers to shut it down, to take disciplined action of that, to move forward, so?
Yeah, I think we, every sort of communication, and, you know, to echo some of the stuff Helen said last week, you know, the more information we get directly at schools, we act on it. You know, I don't think we've got anything reported as being in-class. You know, I think we've seen about 16 different things, students we've talked to throughout the whole year, none of them in a classroom specific. So, but we would go through, and again, on May 9th, we'd go through and review systematically, kind of, they're to contact the assistant principal, the assistant principal investigates it, there's a consequence tied to the student handbook, communication, hopefully go back to the teacher, and in that communication of what infraction would go, contact to the parent would happen. You know, that's how we do when any incident happens, so vaping being one of them. But I think it goes on what information we have to go act on, so, not to go on rumor, but...
Right, that's the challenge.
You know, when we're contacting on one, we react to it. You know, so, and I think the more people are educated on it, and again, our staff, I think the information that went out in December had some conversation of, wow, I didn't know a vape could look like a cell phone charger, for instance.
Right.
You know, so I think there was education known then, so I think one of the things in talking to our school nurse, Ms. McDonald, and Cheryl Barzac is, Diane Knight has access to a lot of different types of things, vapes, that they can turn in and like show, we could actually see and pass around and identify, because, you know, maybe there is someone trying to plug something in that is a vape that could be a cell phone charger that an adult doesn't know. You know, I think we can only speak to what we're educated on in the classroom, and then if teachers see it, they're gonna report it, too. So I don't think we hurt for when things are seen, if being reported on.
Is there any available information that could be posted specifically, like in the bathrooms? I mean, we provide a lot of information in bathrooms about, you know, safety and, you know, crisis hotlines and other things like that. I mean, if vaping is happening in the bathrooms, would it be helpful to have a, you know, to have an educational poster in the bathroom that, that talks about the dangers of vaping?
Um, I mean, I think...
I mean, I don't know if there's materials out there.
I think how we post and educate things, not necessarily in the bathroom, being that spot, but I think we're open to educating our students and our staff. I think students, to go back a little bit, students know vaping's wrong. So I don't wanna go to, especially the high school level. They know right from wrong. They may, some may try and communicate reasons why they wanna do it, some may have just started it and may not know the depth of it being wrong, or the harmful of the addiction pieces to it. So that's the piece, you know, I think we can improve that, but, you know, signage can, you know, also help. I think we can relook at how, what's the best way to inform people and educate things so that either we get bystanders to give us information, or we're helping, helping students.
Yeah, this, this is a major issue, and it's gonna be an issue for the foreseeable future. I was, when I was on vacation, my, my computer got a virus, so I've been up at the mall, the Microsoft store, the last couple of days, and they actually have, I don't know what you call those, like booths in the middle of the mall?
Kiosks.
Yeah. They're the kiosks dedicated just to different vapes. Like hundreds of different models, and they're so small, they're so big, and they're, they're pitching it to teenagers, they're pitching it to teenagers, and until society realizes that it's not good for anyone, my kids, it's gonna be a problem. So I commend you for your efforts and stuff, but it's gonna be an ongoing, ongoing thing.
It is a community problem.
It's a community thing, and it's a parent's education that this is wrong, and it's dangerous, we're gonna be dealing with it, so.
It reminds me a little bit, and Jen was the vice principal the same time I was, in 2004, when chewing tobacco became a massive issue in schools, because they could hide it. And at the time, chewing tobacco, just like the vapes, and Rick remembers this, they went to cherry, they went to all these flavors that were attractive to kids, and, and that was something that I see a similar parallel to.
Just taste that.
It took time for us to get caught up that the kids were chewing tobacco in school.
One thing I wanted to share is, a parent sent this to Jen and me, related to the town, North Andover Board of Health, has a whole document about the regulation, regulating the sale and use of tobacco nicotine delivery products. And our town actually has a higher age limit, I think a lot of places are 18 and older, but actually North Andover has no person sell shell or other, sell or otherwise distribute tobacco nicotine delivery products to persons under 21 years of age. So while you're all battling, I think that, you know, maybe, I don't know how much is going on with the, the point-of-sale situation. I mean, I think Liam mentioned earlier, I've heard that very close to our school buildings, they can easily get what they need. So, again, as a community problem, maybe, you know, some support that way, and cracking down on the vendors in the first place maybe needs to take place, I don't know. But at least the town has tried by raising the age a little bit.
They're free to die in New Hampshire.
True. So we will be bringing forward changes to the handbook, and first reading next week.
Yep. And I just wanna say one thing, I mean, my oldest is in eighth grade, and I don't know the details of it, but apparently somebody either got caught or something, and, and it went through like this ripple of, of the kids, of the trouble he got into. And I don't know if he got into trouble, I don't know any of it, but...
I don't wanna say I'm happy to hear that.
But there was like this little undercurrent of, of like, oh my god, like, we're all gonna, you know, not, not that my kid's doing it, you better not be, but...
I'll let you know.
I know.
Yeah.
But I mean, honestly, I mean, there was, there was some fear with these kids, and I loved it.
So, the policies that we will put in the, to the handbook are gonna reflect sort of the practices that we've already started to adopt, because we have conversations as administrative teams at the high school and the middle school saying, this is a tobacco-type product.
Right.
So it has the repercussions of smoking a cigarette, you know, so we didn't treat it lightly, even if the kid thought that it was a lighter version of tobacco. You know, so if we can give a consistent, clear message that is, you know, holding a kid responsible, but also using it as a tool for education, you know, to let people know, and then being proactive with our partnerships with the youth center, our partnerships with the nurses, our partnerships with the police department, things like that, to sort of get ahead of it, and our health teachers, obviously.
And then I just have one final question. Anything with, and I know it's probably a hot topic, but MIAA, with any of their rules of, I mean, they have some very specific rules on alcohol and tobacco, have they also updated in terms of they being...
It is a chemical health violation.
It is, it is considered a chemical, okay. All right, I just didn't know if it, if they had legal room, or if they had updated appropriately.
And we're making sure kids know that, because the ones that we're dealing with, to be honest with you, it's a lot of athletes, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not the perception that it's a certain faction of kids that people say, So it's not the perception that it's a certain faction of kids that people say, well, they must be, no. Some of the kids we've been dealing flat out have been athletes. So I've actually taken the proactive approach with it, like, you know, you ready to lose ya a quarter of your season over vaping, and, oh, it's not, I don't think that's a violation. Well, it really is. And they've made it, the high schools made it very clear through the MIA. So, you know, the more information, the more that we can make sure kids know, all kids know it, but especially some of the kids that I don't think people think would be vaping are some of the kids that are vaping.
Right. No, I mean, I love it's consistent on all fronts, so.
Well, it is a huge parent education problem, challenge, for sure.
Thank you for taking the time to be with us.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, and we knew it was going to be long, right?
We did.
The longest meeting since, since last time.
Since last time. Last time was almost ten o'clock, so.
All right, we can move.
Should we, these are faster, it would be great if we could go down to eight B.
Should we jump to, to Nikki? Yes, Nikki, yeah.
Right.
So, do you want to come forward, Nikki?
Right, so we're going to look at eleven B, the presentation, new business presentation of social emotional learning and student services.
So just to set this up, and then I'll pass it over to Donna and Nikki. So, you know, as you know, one of our strategic initiatives this year was really to think about how we provide social emotional learning support for our teachers, for our students. We've also talked quite a bit that, you know, North Andover is being seen as kind of a leader in this area. So we thought it would be really helpful to have Nikki and Donna present kind of what we've been doing, and you will see that this is, again, intimately involved with our strategic plan, and they're going to go over some aspects of the strategic plan and what we've been doing. And I think the first was to hire a director of social emotional learning, which we're one of the few in the state, I would say, how many?
Maybe ten at this point.
In the entire state.
New, every year you start to see more and more because there's such a high need, but at this point.
And we get continually asked about this position. I'm sending this, your job description out to all sorts of superintendents, so.
Yes.
Turn it over to you, to one of.
Okay, great. All right, great. Well, thank you. I know that we've covered some of this information previously, but just to do some review, and also just to help the community at home understand the needs of it. As we've heard, I think this is a perfect ending presentation for the evening because it really ties so closely in with all of the other presenters tonight, and the incredible importance of developing social emotional skills, having those opportunities to teach, train, generalize those skills for our students. We're very fortunate that we are able to have a director of social emotional learning and really look at a comprehensive program across settings, including tiered systems of supports. So I think the first area that we would like to do is really give you an understanding of, most people don't understand what social emotional learning is, and what does it cover, and can you actually measure something? You know, you can measure reading growth, you can measure math growth, can you measure social emotional growth? And the answer is yes. So what I'm going to do is let Nikki kind of talk a little bit about the specific areas that we've decided are important to both teach our students and measure the development in those particular areas.
Thank you. Additionally, I did hand out some folders. This just has a little bit of information that I thought was pertinent to both the strategic plan as it relates to SEL, and I'll refer to it a few times as we go through some of the slides. So this first slide is simply a definition of social emotional learning, a process of acquiring and applying the knowledge, skills, and attitudes related to five core competency areas. And these are in all SEL evidence-based curriculums. We're trying to teach kids, but I think the really important point to make is we're also trying to teach staff how to acquire these skills, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Oops, go back one. So MTSS, multi-tiered systems of supports, term that probably most people have heard a thousand times. I think that in, historically, in most school systems, we focus on the left side of the triangle. We're focusing on the academic tiered systems of supports that we put into place. I think it's very important to understand that when we talk about social emotional learning, we're looking at what are the behavioral systems and supports that we put into place? And it follows exactly the same way we implement systems of support academically. Mainly, what we're looking at is remembering that eighty percent of our kids fall into tier one, which is the green, and that's where universal interventions are put into place. About ten percent fall into the yellow, that's where targeted interventions and supports are put into place. And then five percent typically kids that are special education, need special education services, fall into the red, and need that really intensive level of support. So it's no different for academics and for behavioral. And when we put in, and my job is to put in those system structures, policies, interventions, everything related to social emotional learning on all three tiers.
And they're really tightly connected if you consider the impact of understanding, recognizing, regulating your emotions as a direct impact to your ability to learn, to focus, to sustain attention within the classroom, or even as adults, we know that.
And it's also important to understand MTSS as a framework for achieving the outcomes of what we're trying to do with SEL. It's not a specific curriculum intervention or practice. Grab research.
So basically, there's a lot of history with regards to what Nikki was just discussing with regard to social emotional learning. And if you think about it, you know, we've seen that it's nine points higher in pro-social behavior, nine points lower in conduct problems, ten points lower in emotional distress, eleven points higher in academic achievement. Again, these are items that can be measured, and these are items that we're looking to measure here in North Andover with our students as well as with our staff, and looking at our communities across settings, both within the classroom and within the school setting, as well as what is our capacity district-wide to be able to manage and understand all of these pieces as well. And we've talked about before, you know, if you look at the economic value, we've discussed the fact that forty-five percent or greater of our out-of-district placement students are based on social emotional issues and concerns. And many of those, if the students and our staff administrators had an understanding of how to manage these pieces, how to manage regulation of your emotions, we wouldn't have these high rates. And in fact, we've already seen a decrease in some of these students going out of district and bringing some kids back because of the work that we've already started to do. So it's kind of exciting to think about, we're just in the forefront of beginning it here in North Andover, and as we start to grow it, what is that going to look like?
So the research base is very strong, lots of, you know, a long history of rigorous studies and multiple replications that find sort of that desired behavioral improvements and increase in academic outcomes. Teachers have also been surveyed nationally, and these are just some, some very quick kind of snapshots of some of the results of what teachers believe. This is not North Andover-specific information yet, but we are going to be doing some of that in the future, which I'll speak to in a little bit. But again, you know, in preparing kids for the workforce, in preparing them to become good citizens, how helpful is it in helping them be able to graduate, to get to college, to get through college? Obviously, having social emotional skills are extremely important for them to be able to achieve those outcomes. Did I skip one? I did. So in your folders are a few documents. One is the district strategic plan as it pertains to SEL. And there's essentially five action items that we're going to talk about, and I'm just going to go through them and then speak to exactly what it is we've done this year to show what we've achieved around SEL as it relates to the strategic plan. So you'll see the strategic plan in there. Action item one is we're assessing the district's capacity to support all students' social emotional needs. Number two, researching an SEL curriculum. Number three is developing program and curriculum recommendations with associated budget requests. Action item four is to implement vertical teaming of district SEL tier three program staff. And action item five is to create an SEL action plan. So if you look at what we've done so far, and we've actually done a lot more than this, but in the interest of time, we're trying to just kind of focus on some of the key things that we've done. So when I came in as the director of social emotional learning, one of the first things you always want to do, because my job is to prioritize and operationalize and integrate SEL throughout a district, is to do a needs and resources assessment, and to determine what is it that we have in place already that's working, and what are the needs. So I came in and did somewhat of an informal one, but compiled all of that data, met with teachers, that's why I started in June, so I was able to meet with teachers before they left, and counselors before they left for the summer, met with some central office staff, building-level principals, everyone was wonderful, and allowing me to get as much data as I possibly could prior to going to the school year. We're going to be, you probably know that the high school just did the youth risk behavior survey and completed that, and so I'm going to be now working with the nursing staff to kind of look at that data, and just pull out some of the things related to social emotional learning so that we can put that into sort of, you know, this, all this compilation of data that we're trying to get put together. And then we're also going to be in the spring, this spring, administering a school climate survey and SEL surveys, and that data, all together with the needs and resources assessment, is going to help us to give a really clear plan so that that will inform our SEL action plan, which we have already started working on, but might, obviously, it's a working document, might change, will change, I'm sure, as we get some of that data.
As we get additional data, yeah.
So also, in terms of assessing district capacity, develop partnerships with Transform Ed, which is a research and policy predominantly research group out of Boston, and they've been involved with the largest SEL research study with SEPER out of Harvard, the Center for Education Policy Research, with RAND, studying the exact same social emotional skills that we're going to study in this district over the next three years. And so we're doing almost like a mini version of the large research, you know, study that they've done over many years with the nine core districts in California. Also develop some partnerships with Leahy Behavioral Health. So for example, when I came in, I met with Leahy Behavioral because they can, you know, patient mental health clinic, they can bring clinicians into the school, and it's free to the school, they're billing the insurance companies, but it gives us essentially free clinical support. So I've got four right now in the schools, and then working with Leahy to continue to bring more in next year. We're partnering with the Anti-Defamation League to address and work with creating more inclusive environment and address some of the issues that came out of the middle school last year, and then the Bright Program, which is sort of a tier three social emotional learning program model, and working with them to sort of partner on improving our tier three programs. And then created an SEL data team, so they're going to help review a lot of this data and, you know, use it again to inform the action plan. Do you want to take two, or do you want me to grab that?
Yeah, so just to kind of summarize, so we started some of this work the first year that I came in and looking at it and realizing the significant needs, talking with Cheryl Barzac, again, who we've talked a lot about this evening, she is such an active, important person in all of these levels, so we thank her for that. But just the significant need that we felt, number one, we had to really start working with the tier three approach, those kiddos that are really having the most challenging needs, which is where we're bringing in Leahy and looking for working with the outside partners. The second piece of it was really looking at how can we handle those at-risk youth and those kiddos, and developing those programs, and looking at the types of teams and assistance we can bring in there. Pecan Cannon has been quite beneficial in helping us look at developing some tier-two focused groups in that area. So one thing that people have been really looking for and have been really enthusiastic about, which we've been excited for, is asking for help in these areas. Teachers have been asking for help in how can I work with these children? Principals have been asking, guidance counselors. So in regards to the research of the curriculum, we're really, our global thought is what can we look at that is district-wide and vertically aligned, so that as children move from one level to the next, you're finding a similar language with your teachers, you're finding a similar language and phraseology with your administrators. There's a general understanding, how does it tie into race? So that's a lot of the work that we've been doing with the different subgroups, looking at those different pieces. Principal Jackson came to us, we met with him recently, and Steve Nugent with regards to saying, what can we do in advisory programs to provide high school students? Because you think, wow, high school students, they're almost grown, you know, what could they need at this point? But they need a significant amount of assistance as well in regards to.
Says the mother.
Says those who have high school students.
Yes.
So, so really, we've been very excited and happy to see the enthusiasm really among our staff. And so what we're doing is looking at what is the most cost-effective, what is the most useful and beneficial, because a curriculum is not going to change it, it's what people are doing and what the children are receiving that's really going to make the difference like anything else. So we're at the stage now where we're really narrowing that down as to what is the best way for these skill acquisitions to be obtained by both the kids and the students and the staff members.
So item three is about developing the program and curriculum recommendations with budget requests. I put two proposals together. For Donna, this came out of, again, the needs and resources assessment that I did when I came in in the summer. And one is a proposal for a tier-two social emotional learning program at the middle school. What is that? It's modeled after the tier-two focus program at the high school. So when you think of the tiered, different programming, curriculum, supports, interventions, et cetera, most people understand that tier-three social emotional learning program, you've got kids that are in there with, usually been diagnosed with mental health condition, they need extensive behavioral and social emotional supports throughout the day in order to be able to access the curriculum. What about all of those other at-risk kids that don't get to that level but need a lot of support? And if they get the proper supports and interventions, they don't end up needing additional support, right? So it's a preventative model. So that's one of the proposals. The second proposal is for a second tier-three social emotional program at the elementary level. And that's simply, again, based out of the need. So we have five elementary schools, they're all feeding into the one social emotional program, tier-three program at Kittredge, and they are certainly overburdened, although they do a fantastic job, with too high of a number of students for the amount of staff that they have servicing them. So those are the two proposals that I've shared with Donna as recommendations. Item four is about implementing vertical teaming of the district SEL program staff. So this is, my work this year has been predominantly to focus as much as possible on tier three, and what am I doing? I have a program model that's a highly structured therapeutic program, and I'm working with all the staff regularly, monthly, sometimes often more, training with them, doing constant consults with them, creating and improving training, attending all the SAT teams, that's at the tier-two level, so that if we shore up and get really best practice model student assistance teams in place at the tier-two level, then that reduces the referrals to tier three, meaning reduces potential, you know, referrals for IP testing for kids that really can be serviced appropriately at the tier-two level. And item five is creating an SEL action plan, and that is not in your folders, but the theory of action framework for what we're doing in order to create that plan is in there. And it's the longer document, it's the one that's stapled, sorry. Not expecting anyone to read it right now or potentially ever, but it is helpful to know sort of what our thinking is in creating that. So what did SEL look like this year? When we wrote the district strategic SEL plan, we really tried to, even though the focus had to be more so than in all the other tiers, on tier three, and training that SEL staff and really getting those programs strong, we also felt a need to address some tier-two issues and some tier-one issues to the best of our ability. And so concurrently, what we've done is, at the tier-one level, a lot of professional development, as much as I could do, and we brought other people in as well that were great, to do professional development for classroom teachers, administrators, counselors, et cetera, on lots of different issues. One I've been doing is helping them, because when I was looking at the clinical issues when I came into the needs and resource assessment, the two things I saw a lot of, and I heard a lot of from teachers and counselors and principals, is anxiety and trauma. So what we tried to do is focus a lot of the training this year on creating trauma-informed classrooms, on helping teachers learn strategies for reducing and managing anxiety in the classroom and that kind of stuff. At tier-two, we did a lot of training and work with tier-two student assistance teams, we created some, there were some schools that didn't have them. The ones that did, we tried to help them with a best practice model to improve them. We brought in outside trainers to train on the 504 process and on student assistance teams' best practice model and what that looks like, and then.
And that ties back to our strategic plan as well, is looking for that uniformity across the district with regard to who receives services, what services do they receive, and what is the process in getting there. So we've really worked with the different teams of people in order to achieve all these different areas, so it's not just a couple of us, you know, trying to make decisions here, but really an overarching approach to working with all of the different staff.
And then, this is the last slide, and essentially, so, one of the things that I've been doing, and thank God for Hillary, because she's amazing, she's helped me tremendously with creating the SEL website. So under student services, when you go.
Click onto it, Jim, it's really impressive, can you click on the map?
Oh, great.
Just, if you haven't been to it, it's an amazing source that, I hope she can just show it to you, working hard on it. Whoop, I totally clapped.
There we go.
There we go.
So when you, when you go to the departments, you'll come, you know, what will come up is the social emotional learning department. And so what I've tried to do is, I, again, Hillary uploads everything for me, and I give her all the information, but we meet, we've probably met five or six times this year to create what I'm hoping is a resource, not just for students, staff, but, you know, families in the community as well. If you can click, just on, one sec, if you look to the left, Jim, if you can click on strategies for teachers, right there, yep. So this is going to be more user-friendly, and then can you click on where it says SEL strategies website in blue, right above the flowers, yeah, right there? And then up in the top right-hand corner, behavior index. I promise it's going to be more user-friendly. So what I'm trying to do is really, until I can get to doing a tremendous amount of PD.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, tremendous amount of PD for teachers on, because, you know, that's tier one, and they're, it's an inclusive model they're dealing with, and they're trying to manage and support and help these kids every single day. What I tried to do was give them, so if you can go down to anxiety, do you see that, Jim, on the left, maybe five down, and you click on that, and just scroll down a little bit. This describes for teachers, they can use this at any time they want, what anxiety might look like in the classroom. And then at the bottom, it says, does this describe the student, yes or no? If you click on yes. Thanks, Jim. And what comes up is a list of tier-one interventions, things that they can do that are best practice in the classroom. are best practice in the classroom. You can click on, don't do it right now, but you can click on any single one of those things that are underlined, and it actually describes very briefly, but really clearly for a teacher, let me try this, let me try this. I won't walk you through every single thing, but there's also tier two interventions for anxiety, tier three interventions for anxiety. So SAT teams can go to this when they're trying to create their intervention plans and say, okay, the teacher has done all these tier one interventions for anxiety, they haven't worked, they've collected data, they've shown it, it hasn't worked, now let me go to this site and look at what are some tier two interventions so that I can put that into an intervention plan and help support the teacher in implementing that. And we have it on, as you saw, back of the page, I mean, I guess you could probably just, you don't have to go back through everything, but if you go back to the main page, we have them on anxiety, we have it on disruptive behavior, you know, I mean, it's literally on just about everything, yeah, I mean, everything under the sun, name-calling, it doesn't matter what you're doing in a class, there's some kind of answer to help you out. And if you do go back to the homepage, Jim, the one you originally opened, I just do want to say one more thing.
Can I ask a question about that last one?
Yeah, sure.
So is that, that's not like password protector or anything, that's available for parents and stuff, right?
Correct.
So I mean, so if I'm having a playdate at my house and my kids are calling names, I can go on there and say, hey, it says here I can do this?
Yes, you absolutely can. So it is...
Relocate their activities.
I've got very difficult children.
If you look at, Jim, all the way to the left, I want to click on one more thing. I'll show them.
It's going to get bigger.
The one more thing I just want to show you, and this is much shorter, is the seat to the left, Resources for Families. So to speak a little bit, Helen, to what you were just talking about. So this page, and this will be much more comprehensive, but essentially what I've done is put together four different categories for Resources for Families, dealing with loss, dealing with anxiety, dealing with depression, dealing with trauma. Any one of these links, parents can, can click on and find, how do I help? So for example, as you know, we've had some losses this year with, with students, with, with parents, et cetera, unfortunately in North Andover. And we were able to, principals were able to send out letters notifying and point parents towards this to say, all right, we're dealing with some loss, and what do I do? You know, because parents don't have to know. And it also gives some age-appropriate, so there's resources there for, how do I talk to my five-year-old about loss versus how do I talk to my 15-year-old about loss? So there's a lot more to it than that, I don't want to take up all your time, but if you have a chance to explore the website, again, it's a work in progress, but it does have some information.
We've also considered, you know, a teacher or a parent may look at somebody and not realize what's happening with the child is anxiety, and they look at it as a behavioral issue. So some of the conversations we've had as a team is how can we get that messaging out? How can we get that professional development out to understand that anxiety looks different in different people and to respond to it differently? Because they may not be able to click down to the appropriate area because they're not recognizing it. So we're also looking at working on how we can push some of that PD out. We're about a year away from really looking at tier three because, you know, for any number of reasons of really getting that tier three training out. So we've tried to do a few small group professional developments with teachers, but also with parents. We haven't had the turnout that we had hoped to have. So this is where the Raise Awareness Cable Show came out of, is how to get that messaging out there. So the first two areas that we chose was, one, what are we doing for students with SEL concerns? And we included Rick Gorman in that because of such the connection that we have with him. And then the second piece was, what can you as a parent do with a child who has some anxiety, a school phobia, and what does it look like? And we separated it out by different age levels and brought our therapists in to have those conversations so that parents can go to the cable show and say, oh, that is my kid. And, you know, those are some great ideas that I can work with. So we're really trying to think with our team and collaborate on different ways to sort of message all of this out there.
Besides the messaging, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, I sat in yesterday on an elementary PD on trauma and anxiety and strategies for classroom teachers. And although the SEL team and Student Services and the academics said, we're all trying to plan this up, that was going to be a few years out, we had great lessons yesterday on mini writing lessons and eureka math, but the one I sat in was very well-attended. And I had a 30-plus-year veteran, and what she said is, you know, we always learn a lot about math, we learn a lot about eureka and these different things, but I can take a few of these strategies and use them tomorrow with a particular student I'm struggling with. And it was pretty powerful. And she even gave you a hug at the end.
She did give me a hug. She's a great lady. Yeah, so, and that's been a lot of fun because the tier, at the tier one level, I mean, they really are dying for it. I mean, I think everybody knows that, please help us with these kids, because they don't get any training in their teacher prep or administrative prep programs around, certainly not around mental health disorders, but, but not even really around classroom management strategies when you're dealing with a child that has more than just your average kind of issues that all kids struggle with, so.
I do want to remind you that we put this as part of our Leading the Nation website, and I, and I have to tell you, it wouldn't be an exaggeration to say that we are probably one of the top models in the state of Massachusetts on this issue right now. We have people coming from all over to ask us about this work.
Yes.
And our website has been highly, highly used, not just by folks in North Andover. It is a real place that North Andover is leading the nation, if not the state of Massachusetts.
I mean, it's one of the reasons I took the job. Because I, I saw, you know, there aren't a lot of jobs, but I did the same job in a district prior to coming to North Andover, but there aren't, even though there's an understanding of a very high need, and so like I said, every year we're seeing more and more of these jobs, already it was clear to me that North Andover was incredibly progressive, not just with the leadership, with Jen, with Mr. Gilligan, with Donna, about the importance of this, but the fact that you had RACE and we had BRC, and for 10 years. I mean, so clearly, North Andover is, is well ahead of the game, which I think is going to serve you extremely well in the coming years as these issues continue to become more and more problematic, and you're going to be ahead of the game, you know, because you're addressing it now.
It's nice to provide exemplars, but I will say, this past week, I connected a local community, I wasn't, I was supposed to meet, but I wasn't able to meet because I was tied up with Jen, that wanted to meet with Nikki because of what we're doing. And Jen and I have now met with, Jen with two, myself with three other communities that are looking to model our strategic plan.
That's great.
This is incredible, and, you know, I go on the website, you know, hit or miss, you know, sometimes I think I'm on a little bit more often than not. I've never found this, but I've never stumbled upon this. So I don't, I don't know how we need to maybe make sure people are aware of this. I mean, this is an amazing resource.
It is.
Could you put my moves?
Yeah.
May news.
We need better marketing.
Jim, can you go to the website, because we do have it under Leading the Nation pretty...
Some of the school, some of the, I think, school sites have it in the sidebar too, because I've found it already, yeah.
Well, I will say this, I mean, and you're going to laugh in my face, but Hillary did set me up with a Twitter account, because I'm not 15, I don't know how to tweet, so she helped set that up for me. And I did tweet, I'm trying to do one tweet a week, and I did actually tweet, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, about the website, check out our website.
I think I retweeted that.
You retweeted Jen, and I mean, people are retweeting, thank you.
And I tweeted you, so tonight I'm going to retweet that.
Well, I don't know how to retweet yet, I'm going to get the yellow bar.
It's pretty simple.
I have no idea, but I'm going to learn.
Yeah, we both rely on Hillary quite a bit.
Yes.
So this is a place that we did create social emotional learning.
And school culture climate, yeah.
Yeah.
So I've been doing some tweets and doing the hashtag Leading the Nation, because Hillary told me also, Nikki, you have to do the hashtags. I said, okay, I'm going to try to do the hashtags.
So it's one of the four things we highlight.
Yeah, you know what, I may not have just scrolled down that much on there or something, but, I mean, this, it's fantastic.
Really is.
And then we did the Raise Awareness with the cable show, trying to...
I watched the first one, but I haven't watched the second one yet.
Oh, there's a new one, right?
Yeah. Oh, look at that, new tweet right there.
And I would say, just for the Transform Ed data collection, we're going to be collecting data over a three-year period so that we can really watch the growth and hope to see the kind of growth that we want to see as we put all of these pieces in place to help kids.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you talked about, I mean, we've talked all night about the synergies with the various groups and departments and what have you. You mentioned the Youth Risk Behavior Survey?
Yes.
I know that for certain grades, I forget if it's seventh and ninth or something, we do that ESPT survey as well. Are they similar or how are they different, if you wouldn't mind explaining that?
They're different. You looked like you wanted to grab that one.
No, I'm sorry, Donna, I mean, they're very different. The ones, you know, the ESPT is a quick screener, it's done with a trained professional, it's face-to-face, you know, it's completely confidential.
Right.
Most districts do it with nurse and guidance.
And the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I'm going to throw it back at you, because you know a lot about it.
Sure. It's, it's definitely not...
In person?
No, and it's not SEL-specific at all. It's looking at, again, if you think of youth risk and what, you know, so it's looking at drugs and it's looking at other health issues, et cetera. So the reason I want to really look at the data is that there are a few different things in that behavior survey that I can pull from that would help inform the SEL action plan and what systems and supports we put in using the MTS framework on all three tiers.
But would theoretically help the nursing staff as well?
Absolutely.
So what is the ESPT survey? I thought that was about drugs and alcohol and risky behavior too, no?
Yeah, the ESPT, the ESPT survey particularly, and Cheryl came in and...
Right, right, that's...
It's the law.
It's the law.
Right, right.
If we were the first, one of the first five districts in the Commonwealth of America, it is about some of that behavior, depending on drug use.
Specifically...
So you're going to, we're going to have even more data with, you're working with this.
Yes, so what we're doing is going to look at, we're going to measure school culture and climate, and all staff and students will, will answer that survey. And that'll give us a broader picture, because school culture, climate falls under social emotional learning.
Sure, okay.
And then specifically, what students, what we'll be measuring on the student side is just four social emotional competencies. So when we talked about those five core competency areas, there's 44 subskills that fall under those five core competency areas, you can't measure all of those skills, obviously. So what we're doing is modeling this longitudinal study that I was talking about with the core districts in California, that Harvard and Transform Ed, the partnership that we have with them, that they worked on to study the four skills, SEL skills, that are the most measurable in terms of what we can see for growth once we implement different, yeah, different interventions. So we're going to be looking at growth mindset.
Which is great.
Yeah, great, right? So social awareness, growth mindset, self-efficacy, and self-management.
That's great.
There's a lot of different SEL skills, and some of them are much harder to measure. We don't have enough research yet to show whether or not we can measure once we implement certain interventions. So those are the four we've chosen to study.
I'm really excited about that because I know, I've been on the BRC committee for a very long time, and we've talked different times about how are we going to measure the effectiveness of what we're doing? We've spent a lot of time and energy on it. I don't think it's cost us a whole lot of money. But, you know, we did do an assessment, you know, probably about five years ago, that was, it was really...
We worked with Project Adventure on the assessment, you know, and we've shared some of that with Nikki, and we've done the mast tail and some of the different things. But I think as times change, as things go, as we have different groups come through, this more, this more recent data is going to be really important.
Yeah, I feel like it's super helpful.
The curriculum plan, there's going to be a plan that grows, and they're going to have a plan in place, and then the different years out, it may adapt, adjust, make a correction as a result of the data.
And that's the idea. It's based on empirical research, so like any standard scores, we can look at how our students are doing and do a comparison to make shifts and adjustments as we go along.
I think it's really exciting, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Amazing. Any other questions?
It's outstanding.
It really is. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Well, I think we also have to thank the school committee here in North Andover, they made a decision to support a director of social emotional learning when there are not many school committees in Massachusetts who have made, took it, and, you know, really, we really appreciate it. I think it's so important for our kids, and, you know, this school committee was way out ahead of a lot of other school committees in supporting that, so.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Great.
All right.
Thank you very, very much. I can't wait to go use that website to help my own parenting plans.
I use it privately.
Eleven thirty at night.
Right.
Maybe you need no help with parenting.
No, yes, well, right, very kind.
You make a nap for this.
Actually, actually.
I'm not kidding.
I'm not either.
I tried to follow you and I couldn't get it to work, so you'll have to show me.
No, I have no idea what to do.
That's awesome. So we have, I think mostly, a lot of more housekeeping-ish kind of items left. That's the end of our presentations for the evening.
Yes, thank you for your, I really do appreciate your patience, there's a lot we were trying to get in in these last few minutes.
No, it's excellent, it's very exciting stuff.
It's all connected to it.
That, well, that really showed tonight, I think. So, Jim, we have some exciting revolving accounts.
Exciting, wow.
Let's watch as Jim wrestles the alley.
We have the revolving accounts. I will say that what we tried the best to do is estimate what we're going to spend for the year, what kind of activity we're going to have. But, and it's not a bad problem, we'll be coming forward with this year's budgets because we can only spend up to what the school committee approves. So within the next meeting or two, we'll be coming forward with the final numbers for this year, which will require us to increase the budget for food services and community programs based on participation, and possibly even athletics. They've had pretty high participation for the spring, so...
Track.
Exactly, exactly.
It's track.
Yep. So anyways, we'll approve these, but chances are, given our last few years, we'll be asking for more at the end of the year just based on what the actual numbers are.
So we need to vote on something? I didn't think so, this is...
No, we need to approve these.
We do, okay.
Motion to approve revolving budget, account budgets for 2018, to them.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch.
Aye.
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 Aye. Very good, thank you.
I thought it was an update, I didn't think you were voting on...
So there are two items, there's the...
Okay, you know what, that's what threw me, all right, thank you.
Right, the next one's the update.
Correct.
Okay.
It's only nine thirty, come on.
This one had no action, that's what threw me.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm good.
So Budget Status Update, it really hasn't changed from the last one. I can answer any questions you might have as you look through it, but I will take the opportunity, Helen spoke earlier about asking about donation activity, and it made me realize, the current iteration of the Budget Status Report is a result of past school committees and what they wanted to see regarding Budget Status Updates. You can request that we add anything to the Budget Status Report. So if you think of something you'd like to see, in addition to what you get now, we can certainly add it. So thank you for reminding me of that, I've been meaning to say that for a while now.
Great.
So for instance, if you wanted to see what kind of activity was taking place with regards to those, we could include that.
I'd like to see that.
I knew you would.
Any other questions or requests for data?
I would just like to say I'm very pleased that the school committee supplies this significantly I would just like to say I'm very pleased that the school committee supplies this significantly up the budget.
We work very hard.
At this time of year, we'll be taking that money, just so you know. And moving it, so we can balance our budget, so it's gone at this point.
All eight hundred and twelve dollars.
All eight hundred and twelve dollars has already probably been moved, right, Mr. Mailer?
And much appreciated.
Very good, okay. So then the last thing we have, which we kind of already covered, but this is our first reading on the school choice.
No, we still need to do the approval of transfer of care.
Oh, I beg your, where is that?
F.
Oh, I checked it by mistake.
You're getting excited.
I did, get excited. Yes, so this was what we looked at last week when Andrew Mailer was here, but we did not want to, you know, suspend the rules and jump ahead, so this is for us to look at about the parcel of land that, we got the excellent drawing at the end of the three divided-out areas, and this is our movement of the recreational parcel.
Madam Chair, I move that the school committee transfer the care control, custody, and management of a parcel of land shown as the recreational parcel containing 16.8 acres, more or less located on Chikram Road, as shown on the plan entitled, School Recreation Complex Parcel Configuration dated March 27, 2018, and prepared by Crittensen and Sergi to the Board of Sustenance for general municipal purposes.
Second.
Excellent motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch. That's great. Any, just for the discussion or commentary, I think we talked about it a lot last time. Yes. So why don't we do a roll call for this, too?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Now we can, the first reading of the school choice participation, which we talked about at the top of the meeting a little bit. There it is, and we can vote on it next time.
We'll put it, we'll put it on the, for next time?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, any-
Last page.
Yeah, way at the end.
Okay.
Yep, great. We lost our public, but they were here for a while, that's good, they were awesome. Any other commentary or updates that people would like to share?
I would just like to wish the best of luck to all our seniors who will be making choices by May 1st on what colleges to attend and putting in their enrollment deposits and the families. It's a really exciting time, but it's also a challenging time, where, you know, some students didn't get into their first choice college, and they're, you know, they're coming to terms with those, with those decisions, but it's truly exciting, and so I just wanted to put a word out that, good luck to all those families. That's nice.
So I was just going to say, there's the Massachusetts School Committee Association, and we kind of share some ideas back and forth, and so probably, I don't know, maybe three weeks or so ago, somebody asked a question, I don't know if you guys are all on, but-
I know, I'm on, yeah.
About curriculum, and, you know, does anybody's website kind of have curriculum? And sometimes I respond to some things and sometimes I don't, it depends how busy I am, I guess. And so I shared the link that we have that really kind of details out, you know, the elementary, you know, the middle school and the high school. It's, a lot of times you send something out, and, you know, like, you might get like a thank you back, or, you know, like, oh, that's really interesting. The number of personal emails, not reply-alls.
Yeah, because I didn't say anything, yeah.
Of how awesome it was, how much they, like, would love to get there. You know, and again, just talking a little bit about Leading the Nation, like, you know, a number of towns said, like, we've got that for high school, like, but we have nothing at the elementary level. You know, our goal is to maybe look at the middle school, but, you know, we've got a couple of middle schools, and, you know, so, you know, we're a little unique with some of that. But the feedback has just been absolutely amazing, and I know that, you know, Dr. Gilligan has spent, I don't know, how many years?
Six.
Six years, working on that, and a lot of sweat and hard work, not just by you, but, you know, other people. Other people, you know, from, from teachers, you know, all over, but, I mean, how well-
Reading care.
Amazingly well-regarded and respected, and I just wanted to share that with you and then Dr. Price for, obviously, you know, letting him continue to do that, and I don't think you could stop him from doing it, but-
Others have tried.
I am making some updates to the elementary with the Eureka Math.
But, I mean, I also hadn't been on it in a little bit of time, and I just feel like everything came together in a really awesome way, and I know part of it is the web design